Let's go ahead. We have.
And we are live.
Great. Okay, Andy, did you want to start off or should I just kick in and?
I'll go right ahead. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Andy Port, and welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Newbury Report zoning Board of Appeals. This is our hearing for the Agenda Evening of November 10, 2020, our start time being 7:00 PM and it being 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and start our meeting agenda this evening. For those of you that may not have participated in a Zoom version of an administrative municipal hearing such as ZBA, such as, you know, every board and commission during COVID, I'll give you a quick outline of how things will proceed. To begin with, I'm going to start by introducing our board. We'll go through our agenda. For those of you that may or may not have the agenda, it's all available on the City of Newbury Reports website. If you click on the agenda itself, there's also a hyperlink that takes you to all the related materials for each application that's on our agenda this evening. We'll follow the agenda, and as soon as I introduce the board, we'll go right into the roll call. Then we'll go into the public hearings. There are, there is one matter that's being shifted to the, to the end of our agenda because one of our members has to recuse themselves, and then there'll be another matter that is a request for a continuance. We'll address those matters first for, in the interest and out of courtesy of those that might be in attendance to speak or at least listen in connection with those applications so that you don't spend the next hour or so listening only to hear the matter continued. So, without further ado, we will go through the, the roll call this evening, and I'll begin by introducing myself. My name's Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman of the, of the zoning Board of Appeals. We have in attendance this evening Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chair, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Ms. Rachel Webb, member, Mr. Ken Swanton, member, Mr. Walter Shannon, associate member, and Mr. Brendan Benavik, also associate member. Also in attendance this evening is Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Mr. Andy Port, our planning director, as well, as well as Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. So I will jump right into the roll call, and then we'll get started with our public hearings. Just for those of you that are logging on or are attending for the first time, with the zoning board of appeals, a, a successful application has to receive at least four votes in the affirmative. I will designate which are our five voting members this evening. We have associate members as well as full members, but we will designate our five voting members, and if there is a recusal of any voting member, then the next available associate member will step up and become a voting member. I'll let those of you, I'll let everyone know for the record who that individual is should that come to pass. So without further ado, calling the roll, Mr. Mark Moore, and just please respond, members of the ZBA with either here or present. Mr. Mark Moore.
I am here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Ms. Rachel Webb.
Here.
Mr. Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Budchannon.
Here.
And Mr. Brendan Benavik.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Benavik. And again, I'm Rob Champetti. I'll also answer present. So we have a full board present, and the voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb, and Mr. Swanton. And in the event of a recusal, we'll have Mr. Benavik step up as the voting member. And I believe there's one matter on the application of 468th Street where I have to recuse myself, and Mr. Benavik will be the fifth voting member on that application. Mr. Moore, our vice chair, will step up on that application as chairman. Okay. So we have the, the minutes from our last meeting, although it's not shown in our agenda, we know that we have minutes from Ms. Gretchen Joy. Do members of the ZBA, anyone have any comments, questions, modifications, or revisions to the minutes? Mr. Moore.
I was not in attendance at last meeting, so I'll have no comments.
Okay, Mr. Delisle.
I do not have any.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Webb.
Um, yes, I have a couple. Page two, let's see, um, the second paragraph. Let's see, said a single curb cut would be preferable in general. Oh, it's something, Rob, that you were quoted as saying. Mr. Champetti said the curb cut already exists, and he does, I think the word not should be there, does not know of any prohibition against the second curb cut. That was one. Let's see, moving to page four. Just the word tenure is misspelled in the third paragraph. And then the last paragraph of the page, on page four. The second sentence says substantial evidence has been provided that the, I think it's supposed to say the rear addition structure has no remaining market value or reasonable use. They did not intend to be making that statement about the entire structure, I don't believe. That was Mr. Delisle quoting, so. And. Oh, and then my last comment was on the last page or under general business, that discussion that we had about streamlining, streamlining the way we receive emails. I thought that the minutes accurately reflected the discussion. However, I think after that, didn't we vote to just keep it the way it is, even though people thought that it sounded like it made sense? I don't know.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll poll the rest of the members as well, Rachel, so we can see folks' thoughts on that. Any members of the ZBA having heard Ms. Webb's, Rachel, was that the extent of your comment?
Yes, thank you, Rob.
Okay. Having heard the extent of Ms. Webb's comments on the minutes, do any members of the ZBA have any further comments or, or responses or further discussion on those changes? Seeing no hands from the members, we'll continue to move on. Mr. Swanton, any comments, changes, or revisions to our, to our minutes from our last meeting?
No, I don't.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman.
No additions or changes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Benavik.
No additions as well.
Okay, and I, I have no changes either. And so if we, if we could have a motion from the members of the board with the, you know, with the adoption of the changes requested by Ms. Webb, a motion in a second is what we'll need to advance the, the minutes to approval. Do we have?
I'll move to, to approve the minute as amended by Ms. Webb.
Seconded, seconded, Ken Swanton.
Okay, and Mr. Delisle, were you the moving? Did you move on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. So the motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Swanton. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore.
Having not been in attendance or qualified myself, do I vote on this?
You can, well, you can abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Benavik?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. The minutes are adopted with the modifications submitted by, by Ms. Webb. Thank you. Okay, so moving to the public hearings, before we, we jump in, I'm going to just quickly outline for everyone how the, the process and flow of a ZBA hearing works. For those of you that haven't attended one of these, it's an informative way to know how, what to expect. For those of you that have, I'll apologize in advance for the, for the outline of what we do and how we do it. So because the, the, the meeting is held under the Roberts rules of order, we will begin with each application. I'll read the application as the chairman. I'll read the legal description as well as the applicants by name, as well as identifying by the, the docket number, the application itself, and a descriptor such as special permit, special permit for nonconformities, variance, et cetera, with a description of the, the requested relief as per the legal notice that was published in the Daily News and as per the agenda. After we read the legal, the legal description notice, we'll call it, I will then invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to make their presentation to the board. That's the portion, at which point the applicant or the applicant's attorney, engineer, architect, or, or any variation and combination of the above will make a presentation of the application to the board. At the conclusion of that, I will then close that section of the meeting, and we will then go to questions. I'm sorry, we'll go to comments from the public. It used to be that we would elicit those who wish to speak and support, those that wish to speak in opposition, but what we've been doing recently is to simply elicit those who wish to speak. And whether you are in support of or in opposition to, or just wish to speak, there is no, there is no section for you to speak up. Just simply raise your hand by, by clicking the bottom right of your Zoom, your Zoom webinar screen. It will raise your hand, and then our city plan, our, our planning director, Mr. Port, will then unmute your mic. Make sure, as you look at the bottom left of that screen, there's a mute button. It should be green where it says my, mute my audio should be unchecked. Most likely, it is checked, and there'll be a red line through it, so you'll want to uncheck that. Mr. Port will unmute your mic, and then we will, we will all hear from you. We ask that you give your name and address as well before you speak, and we also ask as a courtesy to all of those that wish to speak that you kindly keep your comments to more or less about two minutes or less. After we hear from everyone who wishes to speak in support and opposition or otherwise, just speak. We will close that portion of the public hearing. We will go to questions from the board. This is when the board members themselves will pose questions, sometimes adapted from questions or comments made by the public, because there's no real response part of that process. The board members will, will adapt those questions and, and form them in the form of questions to either the applicant or the applicant's representatives or otherwise. Those questions are posed by the board to members of the, the applicant themselves, after which we will close that portion of the hearing, and we will go to deliberations. Deliberations is the segment of the public hearing when members of the public and members of, as well as applicants and, and butters and, and anyone in between gets to essentially listen to the ZBA think out loud. Deliberations are where the zoning board of appeals deliberates the, the legal standard that we, that the applicant must meet, whether that standard's been met, questions that are posed, and the, the members themselves will, will pose questions by and between each other as they deliberate out loud in sort of full transparent view of everyone who's, who is in attendance. At the conclusion of deliberations, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and under the Roberts rules of order, in order to advance the matter, a motion is then elicited by me. I'll ask one of the members to, to submit a motion to approve. Now, a motion to approve is just simply how we advance an application. It doesn't mean that that member is necessarily in support of the application, but rather it's just a mechanism by which, under Roberts rules, we will advance it. So it's a, this, the matter is advanced by a member making a motion to approve. That motion is then seconded, and then we will call the roll. In order for the application to be successful, at least four voting members must vote in the affirmative. So having kind of walked through the, the process, we'll then begin with our first matter. And since this is a matter that has, myself as the chair, I have to recuse myself on, we are, and I just want to get, you know, a listen from the board, whether, whether the board wishes to, to move this matter to the end of our agenda. This is the matter of 468th Street, Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, Special Permit for Nonconformities. And since this one has been sort of an ongoing, an ongoing matter, do we, do we wish to, to move that to the end of the agenda, or, or does the board have any other kind of thoughts on how to proceed, or whether to proceed with that first?
This is Mark Moore. I'm comfortable moving it to the end if it, if it makes more sense logistically for everybody.
Okay, anyone else? I, I will, I see in attendance that we have, I believe I saw Ryan McShara of Red Barn in attendance. Mr. McShara, Andy, can you, you unmute his mic? I just want to make sure we, we ask whether he has any objection or strenuous objection to us taking that, that action to move his matter to the end of the agenda.
And Chair, Attorney Mead has her hand raised as well.
Oh, okay, thank you. Attorney Mead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't have an objection at the pleasure of the board to move this matter to the end of the agenda.
Okay, great. And my apologies, I should have recognized that, that Attorney Mead was, was, was representing, was presenting on 468th. Okay, well, thank you, Attorney Mead, and so then without, without further deliberation, we will move the matter.
Say, Rob, Rob, I'm sorry, this is Ken Swanton. I, I think there's also at least one a butter here who is also here for that topic, and just like we asked the applicant.
Oh, of course.
Could we just ask any of butters if it, if that time works for them to?
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for, for reminding me of that, Mr. Swanton. So, so the question goes out to any members of the audience that are here to speak one way or the other in connection with that application. We are imposing upon everyone indeed when we make a shift like this, and whether, whether we make it or not, we definitely wish to do it with the benefit of everyone's input. I see one hand raised. It's a Tara Camet. Mr. Port, can we unmute Ms. Ms. Karen, Ms. Camet's mic, please?
There, yeah, we're, we're fine with pushing it to the end, whatever's best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camet. And, and again, thank you, thank you, Mr. Swan, Swanton, for reminding me to make sure that we, we polled the whole room. Seeing no further hands on this. Do we? We will go ahead and move this, this application to the end of our agenda, and in doing so, we will that, then jump into the first public hearing, which is the matter of 758th Street. I'm going to go ahead and read the legal notice, and then we'll, we'll hear from Attorney Mead on behalf of the applicant. This is an application continued from the meeting of October 27th, 758th Street, docket 2020-074, a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant, Dan Greovac, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Talaman and Costa LLC, a special permit for nonconformities to demolish an existing home and construct a new single-family home on a nonconforming lot. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. However, in this particular instance, my colleague, Libby Baucher, who's on, will be taking the lead on this. I will be chiming in later on, and Eileen Graff, who is the architect, will also be speaking on this. And present this evening is Dan Greovac, the owner of the property as well. So with that, I would turn it over to Libby. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Baucher.
Hi, yes, can everyone hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Excellent. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. As Lisa said, my name is Libby Baucher from Mead Talaman and Costa, and I'm here to present the special permit application for 758th Street. Can we move to the next slide, please? So what we're, let's jump it down a little bit further. Let's see. Oh, no, here we go. So what we're seeking is a special permit to modify a pre-existing nonconforming structure. The structure at, as it exists today is a modest 635 square foot footprint two-bedroom house. It's at grade. It was built in or around the 1950s. It's located in the R3 and the Plum Island Overlay District or the Pyod. It is a pre-existing nonconforming structure and lot. The lot area is smaller than required by zoning. The frontage, the house is too close to the front lot line. It is, has smaller frontage than required under zoning. It's too close to the side B lot line, and it's too close to the rear setback. In all other aspects, the structure and property do comply with the dimensional requirements of the Pyod. Next slide, please. Here are the, the elevations of the existing structure. As you can see, at grade, relatively small, we do have the square footage calculations in the lower left-hand corner. So that's the 635 square feet, and then there's also a shed on the property, which is 79 square feet. And so the existing FAR for this property is 16.9. Next slide, please. So the proposed project is to remove the existing, pre-existing nonconforming two-bedroom single-family home. It's a lot of hyphens, and construct a new two-bedroom, single-family home. This footprint is going to shrink. It's going to go from three, 635 square feet to 560. It will be elevated on pilings to conform with floodplain requirements. There will be parking underneath consolidating the impact on the lot. And it does say here adding a shed. I'm mistaken. The shed is actually already there, and it's going to continue to be there. So some other positives of this project is it's making the structure more compliant with the Pyod requirements. It's completely eliminating the front yard setback nonconformity. It's reducing the side B setback nonconformity. It's reducing the rear yard setback nonconformity. It's reducing the lot coverage, so the structure's going to take up less space over the lot than the existing coverage. In that vein, it's also going to increase the open space of the lot. As I mentioned before, it's reducing the structure's footprint and, and all the aspects that it does not improve. It will maintain compliance with the other dimensional requirements. Next slide, please. So this is just a visual of what I just said, kind of turning that narrative into numbers. Here you can see the parameters that I walked through, the Pyod requirements, the existing structure status, and then the proposed. And here you can see that the front setback is totally eliminated. We're pulling the house far enough back that it would comply with Pyod requirements. We're also reducing the side B setback nonconformity by about a half a foot, and we're also reducing the rear setback nonconformity by another half a foot. Next slide, please. Here is a site plan of the proposed structure compared to the current structure. I, Eileen Graff here, who's the architect for the project, will be able to go into more detail about this if anyone has any questions. We can go to the next slide. All right, and here we have the proposed floor plans of the structure. Here we have the first, second floor and roof plan. Next slide, please. And here are the proposed exterior elevations. You can see the structures lifted to comply with the floodplain requirements. And then, next slide, please. As I'm sure this board is very well aware, here we have our zoning ordinance kind of criteria. So this is from Section 21G4A. The board needs to determine whether the proposed changes are substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood or the Pyod. It's, in our opinion, it is not, for the following reasons. It is continuing to be a two-bedroom, single-family home. It's reducing the footprint and the impact on the lot, again, reducing that footprint from 635 square feet to 560. It's moving the house about six back, six feet back from the street, which eliminates that front setback nonconformity, moves it away from the side B lot line, in the rear lot line, reducing those two nonconformities. It's actually reducing lot coverage of the existing structure from 16.9% to 15.1%. It elevates the home to the preferred standards for the flood zone, which speaks directly to the purpose of the Pyod, which largely revolves around flood resiliency and safety posed by structures in the flood zone, and it maintains compliance with all other dimensional requirements. We've also submitted five letters of support from neighbors immediately adjacent to this property. And with that, I will turn it over to the board to see if they have any questions, or the public for that matter.
Maybe before you do that, Libby, Eileen, could you go through the architectural drawings, please?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, so as you can see from these drawings, it's a rather compact design. It's roughly square, just shy of 24 by 24. You could see the 24 length runs parallel with 50A Street, and then it's just shy of 24 with a dimension of 23 feet four for the direction, the perpendicular direction, with two staircases exiting that first floor level. And then as you travel up to the second floor, it's a reduced footprint of the living space, and it has a second floor deck area as shown above this second floor plan. And then you can travel up to the, to the top floor. They will have a motorized sky hatch to access the top roof deck for some outdoor living space up above to, to benefit with the elevation and get some great views of the basin and, and towards the ocean. And then maybe slide to the exterior elevations. Great. So the front, the, the top left drawing is the front elevation. If you were standing on 50A Street and looking to the house, again, by elevating the building, we allow the opportunity for parking to be underneath. And then you could see the two staircases for exiting and the subsequent roof decks on the various levels. As far as materials, we are proposing shingles on that lower level and some vertical boarding on the second level. They will be some, some steel brackets to help with the overhangs, and then, you know, windows two over one, as you see, and everything compliant in, on the lower level in regards to what's allowable for that floodplain. It's completely open, no skirting around the perimeter of the base. So as you see it on this elevation, and if you travel to the other three, you can see that it's open all below. Also complying with the floodplain, we are elevating on the back of the house. We're elevating the condenser and the generator. So you will see that also hung from the building. But with that, and there it is on that right side of that elevation, and this is the elevation that faces the basin. And then if you want to scroll through the other two, just for a quick look. There you go, from the rear. So this is the backside of the property. And then this elevation would be the one that would be facing Northern Boulevard, if you will. So that is a quick description of, of the, of the design of the residence. Again, it's a very compact and very efficient design of 1,055 square feet. And in this, on the, in the calculations for the FAR, again, are including the existing shed that is on the property. And with that, I will pass it back to either Libby or the board.
This is Libby. I think we can go right to the board.
Okay, thank you, Libby. This is Chairman Rob Champetti again. So having heard from the applicant on presentation, and thank you for that detail to everyone, we will close that portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition, or just simply speak, you'll see instructions for public comment up on the, the Zoom screen at this point, just outlining exactly what we ask every member of the public to do. If you are interested in speaking, just please, on the bottom right, indicate so by raising your hand, and we will unmute your mic. And again, just, we ask that you give your name and address so that our, our keeper of the minutes can record that. I see Attorney Barker, I see your hand up, but I don't know if that's a, an error, whether you wish to speak further. Ah, thank you. Okay, so anyone wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to, or simply speak with respect to this application, seeing no hands, going once, going twice. Still seeing no hands, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Members of the board posing questions to the applicant or any of the applicant's representatives. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Could I ask again for just a, a review of the changes in square footage? I got, I think, a little confused on what the size was, was and what it's going to on the square-footed size.
Would you, I can speak to that. This is Eileen Graff again. So the existing footprint, or sorry, first floor FAR, do you, do you mean square footage or total FAR?
That's square footage.
Square footage. So the, so the existing house exists at 635 square feet. And then it, the proposed house is 1,055.
Did that not get reduced to 976?
Sorry, where are you?
I'm just looking. It's from staff notes. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, apologies. The FAR is 1055 minus the 79 for the shed.
Got it, okay.
Yes.
So that's where the number changed from the shed. Okay.
Any further questions, Mr. Moore?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Ms. Graff, if you're still on the, on the line, I'll pose the first one to you. Just, I, I just wanted to ask you about the, the open first level, where, which I guess would be used for, for parking. Could, could you just sort of explain the the concept of leaving that open?
The concept of leaving that open? Yeah, so often you'll see on Plum Island that sometimes you, you will see a skirting that happens around the building. And that is based on the floodplain and in which you can have any type of enclosure, bottom of structure, et cetera. In this case, we cannot have anything lower than the bottom that we are showing. So we really are leaving just what's allowed, the nine pile, steel piles. And then, of course, there's an exception for the access of the stairs. And then less the, the, the three by three square that allows utilities to come up from the ground to the building. So those are the only pieces that connect to the ground level.
Okay, okay, so that's driven by regulation, not by architectural consideration.
Correct.
I was just curious. Okay. The second question is just, again, I guess, Ms. Graff, following up on Mr. Moore's question, what's the, the square footage of the, of the footprint on the first floor?
Is 560 square feet.
And then my last question, and I, maybe this is for you again, Ms. Graff, or, or maybe for Ms. Bakker. With regard, oh, Andy, thank you for that. With respect to the, the setbacks, are those measured to include the the overhanging generator or AC units that you referenced in the presentation?
I can address that. This is Libby Bakker. So, no, they're not. They're, as provided by the definitions in the Newbury Port Ordinance, they are measured to the building wall or the building line, which is where the wall face kind of hits the ground. Building line, which is section 2B, says that all yard requirements are to be measured to the building line. So that's where the setbacks are calculated from, not the overhangs, which are elevated above that.
Okay, so those, those, for all intents and purposes, don't matter under the, the definition of the term in the, in the NGO.
Correct.
Yeah, this is Andy Port, the director. Yeah, the, so the condenser equipment would fall in that same category. It's not, it's exempt from the, the setback. It's, you know, because they're typically small pieces of equipment, so.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's great, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Webb.
I'm not sure, maybe this is a question for Ms. Graff. Our staff report indicates that the the number of bedrooms is staying the same, but there are going to be two additional bathrooms. So how many bathrooms currently exist? And how many, in addition to what exists, will be built?
Sure. So currently, there's one full bathroom in the existing residence. And then the new plan will actually have two and a half bathrooms. So it's adding one full bath, but then on the top floor where there's living space, there's a powder room.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton.
No, I don't have any questions, mine have been addressed.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman.
No additional questions. Ms. Webb asked what I was looking for, thank you.
And Mr. Banovic?
No, I, I think everything's been addressed. I was looking at the FAR requirements, and it does seem like it's coming in under. And I looked around surrounding properties, and it seems to be within line. So I think that's kind of what I was looking for. I appreciate the presentation. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Banovic. And I, I, I feel the same way. I don't, I don't have any further questions, other than the questions that have already been addressed, and I appreciate those. So we, without any further questions from the board, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll move to deliberations. In deliberating this matter, the board, in considering a special permit for nonconformities, must make certain findings. The board must find that the proposed change, being proposed by the applicant, will not cause the structure to be within 10 feet of the sideline, the side lot line, more than two stories or more than 35 feet in height. Those are the dimensional controls. As shown on the plan, the new, it appears the new prop, proposal will not be within 10 feet of the sidelines. The residents will be two stories and will be 31.5 feet in height. The board must also consider the application as to whether they believe that it will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming user structure or the pyod. And when making this determination, we as a board are expected to consider factors such as size, scale, massing, and volume as compared to other structures in the neighborhood. So with that in mind, I'll, I'll go through our, our sort of roll call on deliberations of our board members. And we'll begin with you, Mr. Moore.
Mine will be, will be brief, but in looking at this proposal and overlaying with the pyod, it seems like a modest, a modest change. Doesn't, it, it keeps within the FAR, which, as we all know, is, is front and center out there. And while not a perfect number, something we can use as a guideline when determining more detrimental. Height requirements met. You're allowed to put another story on. I think it's well done. It was well presented and, and then with the letters of support, four letters of support of close abouters. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just echo what Mr. Moore said. I, I have no problems with this. I'm glad it stays under the the requirements for, for the FAR. I think that, that, that could have been an issue. But seeing what we have here, based on the presentation and, and the, the material submitted by the applicant, I can support this application.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb.
I concur with my colleagues and the points they've raised so far. I took a drive out there again this afternoon, and it's a very tight area. But I, I really appreciate seeing the, the drawings, the elevation drawings, so I can really get a sense for what is being proposed. I like that there is not an additional bedroom. This is a very rare proposal. Typically, we see proposals from people wanting to build more bedrooms. But instead, this one is, is asking to build more bathrooms. And I don't think we've ever had this kind of conversation before as EBA meeting. But I would just note that with the increase of one and a half baths, that there will be that increased water and sewer usage. So I just want to note that for the record.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I, I think my colleagues have already said a lot of it. I, I can support this application. I'm particularly thankful for the way the applicant was extremely clear about their FAR calculation. And I, I think the other folks have already said my comments, so I can support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton. And though not voting this evening on these applications, we'll begin with Mr. Chairman and then Mr. Banovic. Mr. Chairman.
I agree with my colleagues, a great presentation. And again, I agree with previous comments. Our calculation was clear and, of course, acceptable. So I could, I could support this if I was indeed voting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Banovic.
Yeah, I'll make mine brief. I, I agree with the, I think Mr. Moore said it most succinctly, and I think they did a great job, and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Banovic. And Rob Champetti here. I'll, I'll just say that I, I concur with everyone, and I really, really appreciate the, the, the very sensitive, sort of compact and, you know, efficient use of design. And to Eileen Graff's credit, though not surprising, this is, you know, a wonderful adaptation of, 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 you know, of this kind of use and structure on this size lot. And certainly, as one voting member, I appreciate it. And it's, you know, it's a very aesthetic presentation and design as well. So it's, it's well thought out, well presented, by my view, and I agree with my colleagues on every other point that was made. So we can, unless there was anything further, and I don't see any hands on deliberations, we can close that portion of the public hearing, and we will move to the voting segment. And I will ask a member to make a motion.
This is Mark Moore. I'll make a motion to approve application 2020-074 for 758 Street, special permit for nonconformities.
All right, Mr. Moore's motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application is approved. Thank you very much to everyone and for your, your patience and your, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right. Moving to the, before we move to the next application, I noticed a bit of a housekeeping matter in that we have an application that's at the end of our agenda. And in, out of courtesy to those that may be here to expecting to speak or comment with respect to this application, it's the last matter on our agenda. Sherry Evans and Andrew Rosen care of Adam Costa, me, Talbot and Costa LLC. On the matter of 6-8 Savory Street, it's an appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's determination. Docket 078 of 2020, the applicant has, has requested of the board that we continue that application to the meeting of December 8th. Attorney Mead or Attorney Costa, do you wish to be heard on the request to continue?
Mr. Chair, this is Lisa Mead. No, thank you. It's, speaks for itself, and we would request the board continue it.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. So we have a, a request for a continuance. And before we go any further, let's give courtesy to those that might be here on that matter, and go ahead and take care of this. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the continuance to the meeting of December 8th?
So move, Mr. Moore.
Second. Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the matter of 68 Savory Street is continued to 128. Thank you very much. And for those members in attendance that are here on that matter, this matter will be taken up and opened in full on the hearing of 128. Any questions, certainly you can pose to the planning office, Mr. Port or Ms. Sullivan. I would be happy to kind of add any additional detail that you might need. So, moving to the next matter that is on our agenda, this is the application by Michael Gray for the property address of 12 Harrison Street. This is a special permit, a request for written approval to authorize the removal of three walls resulting in demolition of over 25% within the demolition control overlay district, docket 075 of 2020. And we have, as the presenters for this application, Mr.'s David Mack, Dan Webb, Barry Gannick, and Michael Gray. May we hear from the applicant, gentlemen?
Good evening. This is David Mack speaking. Can I, is my volume okay here?
We, we can hear you great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I haven't been before any of you before, so I appreciate the opportunity and the time. And I'll try to be as brief as possible, because this is a project that you've seen before. And as I'll explain going forward, it's, it's virtually identical to what you saw in May. With me, Mr. Webb has unfortunately had a family commitment that he cannot be here. Mr. Gannick is on the line, and Mr. Gray is as well. So as, as noted, this is, the, the address is 12 to 14 Harrison Street. But this is actually a one-family home that's being converted from a two-family home. Andy, can you skip to the next slide? Just a brief overview, this is in a residential neighborhood. It's in the R2 district. It's in the DCOD district, obviously. It's an old house. It was built somewhere in the late 18th century, early 19th century. It's not a historic property in the sense it's not registered on any historic list as it was when it was purchased. It was a pretty, it was in pretty rough shape. I think 60 people went through the house on, when it was put on the market. And Mr. Gray and one other soul made offers, and Mr. Gray, nobody else did. It's on a pretty small lot. It's surrounded all by residential buildings. It's not near any businesses. It's all residential. So if you could flip to slide four, actually. Andy, this is what the property looked like when it was purchased. It's vinyl siding, it had vinyl siding, it had a staircase in the back abutting the rail trail. And if you flip to the next slide, this is what it looked like a long time ago. So the way it was when Mr. Gray, Mr. Gray purchased it, it didn't really resemble what it looked like way back when. And many of the changes that had been made were made in the last 30 to 40 years, including making it a two-family, which obviously wasn't how it was originally, and some of the other features. So the Grays purchased it with the intent of really gutting it from the inside out. As I said, it was in a very rough shape. The Grays hired Mr. Gannick as the architect, drew up plans. And the gist of the project, if you could flip the number six, thank you, was to revert the, you know, the pre-existing, pre-existing nonconforming two-family back to a one-family. A nonconformities permit was needed because it was raising the roof line. Proposed three feet, it ended up being about 18 inches, but still well below the height limit. I was going to restore the gambrel gable elevation, put clapboard siding to replace the vinyl siding, remove the exterior staircase that had been in the back, maintaining the existing footprint. They didn't expect to have to take down any of the exterior framing, nor did they want to. That's obviously much more complicated and extensive. All the interior work was allowed as of right. And indeed, if you look at the, the DCOD ordinance, it allows even, it doesn't even define demolition as, as removing siding. So in theory, you could take clapboard siding off and, and put vinyl siding on, and it wouldn't require any type of permit. But needless to say, they moved forward. We went to the historical commission, not under, under my regime. Mark Griffin was involved. He couldn't take it on in September, so I'm involved now. And they didn't expect to demolish anything, and therefore, the only thing that was needed was a demolition conformities permit. Slides seven through 12 show the plans. The, these are the exact same plans that were before the board in, in May. Same design, same footprint, same exterior in every single respect. Mr. Gannick's here, and Mr. Gray's here to answer questions about that. But nothing has changed from, from this standpoint. The plans are identical. The National, the Newbury Port Historical Commission recommended approval. They weren't particularly enamored with multiple roof decks. They took one off. And they were pleased with some of the historical restorations that were being proposed, including, as I mentioned, two-to-one family, removal of the staircase in the back, replacing the vinyl siding. replacing the vinyl siding, restoring the gate, the gable, gambrel gable. And overall approved it. So we came back to the, the, this board approved the nonconformity special permit. We started construction and went peeling back the wallboard. And this is the procedural history. Thank you, Andy. So in June, the building permit was issued. He started working and when peeling back the wallboard, I noticed a ton of damage to the framing. Fire damage, flood and water damage. Noticed that it was not the original framing. It had been, you know, a patchwork of really poor workmanship. So much so that it was, it was a no-brainer in terms of a construction and structural standpoint that it had to come out. If you flip to slide fourteen, Andy, this is, you know, this is a photo where showing some of the patchwork, old framing with some notations showing that it was just not, you know, it was not the original framing. It didn't appear to have historic significance and it was really bad shape. So you know, although obvious, Mr. Gray, you know, submitted opinions afterwards, obviously in slides seventeen and eighteen from Mr. Gannick and Mr. Webb saying that, look, the, this framing just could not be saved. So Mr. Gray proceeded to take down some exterior framing and if he could go back, he would have stopped and, and, and come back to the board. If you go back to, this shows some of the new framing that's in right now. If you go back to the previous slide, Mr. Port, number fifteen, it shows some new framing and old framing side by side. And, and really that's, that is the totality of the difference of what we're talking about right now. Mr. Gray didn't appreciate at the time that that removal of exterior framing, although not visible from the street, although not structurally sound. And and although not the original framing, it nonetheless triggered the demolition control overlay district ordinance in that if you remove twenty-five percent or more of the walls, whether visible or not, any component of the walls, you need a demolition control overlay district special permit. So a zoning violation was issued. The project was demanded to be stopped. Mr. Gray, of course, complied immediately. And under your ordinance, the, the, you know, process is triggered where we speak to, you know, the planning staff and decide what we need to do. And there were two things that arose. One is to, under section twenty-eight E8, there are penalties imposed if you demolish as it's defined in the ordinance, historic structure without the special permit. Without approval of the, the zoning board, you can't get a building permit. Well, the building permit obviously was issued. So after conferring with planning, the planning department, a decision was made to seek permission to continue with the project and sort of to resume the building permit that's been issued and resume the project. The other component of the request, what we're here before the board tonight, is it was decided that maybe out of an abundance of caution, we should get the actual special permit. Both in a retroactive respect in the sense that twenty-five percent or more of the exterior framing has been removed. It can't be replaced. It's just, it's, it's gone. It wasn't salvageable to begin with. But also to the extent that there's twenty-five percent or more remaining to be removed, that we get that special permit. So if you could flip to slide twenty-two, that's what we're here about tonight. And those are the two things. The request for written approval so that we don't have to endure the three-year, three-year moratorium on this project imposed under this section of the ordinance. And the issuance of a special permit under the ordinance to account for the removal of the framing that has occurred and what might need to, what will need to be occurred. I'm not sure. We haven't done the specific measurements, whether it exceeds twenty-five percent, but out of an abundance and caution, we'll assume that there still is twenty-five percent or more of the exterior framing remaining. Now I will note that there's also an appeal pending that we hope we'll never have to get to and we hope that will be mooted. But out of an abundance of caution, because you can't revive rights on appeal if they expire, we filed an appeal of the zoning enforcement violation. And we hope never to proceed on that. That's been continued to December and hopefully can be dismissed. So that's where we are. Though, if you could flip to, to back a little bit to slides of nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, that's what the project looks like now. It's boarded up. It's tarped. It's unoccupied. It's obviously not attractive. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood where many of the neighbors who are here on the call tonight have to look at it. They've undergone their own substantial renovations of these houses over the years. So that's where we are. So looking now at what, what needs to be done in the criteria, if you could flip to slide twenty-three, Mr. Port, there's no standard under your ordinance, under section eight, as to what should be looked at by the zoning board and determining whether to either waive or, or relax the three-year moratorium. The DCOD special permit standard is well defined, or it's defined anyway. I think it's well defined. So turning to those criteria, let me take them in order. The, and these are submitted in writing in detail what our, what our arguments are, but for the, the approval, I think from a, from a, the standpoint of, well, where do we go from here? A, imposing a three-year moratorium in this circumstance where literally the only thing that has changed from the project that was presented in May is the framing, the replacement of, of old, but not original, structurally unsound, rotted framing that's not visible from the street. That is the only change. There's no change in design, no change in the improvements from a historical perspective that were a part of the project originally remain. And I get it. I was on the planning board in Beverly for fif- twelve to fifteen years. And there were occasions where, you know, the, the, the project went forward and changes were made in the field that shouldn't have been. And, you know, the applicants came back and asked for permission, so to speak, after the fact. It's not ideal. I get it. Mr. Gray has already suffered. The three-year, three months have already expired. The project has been delayed. He's obviously incurred a substantial expense of sort of reapplying and, and getting these applications in front of this board. And under these circumstances, all the neighbors want to see the project proceed. They've all, many have submitted letters. Many are on the phone tonight. So I think under these circumstances, given that there really is no identifiable historic significance of the framing itself and all of the other aspects of the project, including the entire gutting of the interior, is allowed as of right and was previously approved. And where really isn't necessary based on, in the opinions of the architect and the engineer, that the framing come out and be replaced in order to have a safe, sound project, we would request that the board grant the approval and give the approval for the building permit to be reinstated. As for the other aspect of our request, the DCOD special permit, the standard as in identified on the screen is where a building or structure retains no substantial remaining market value or reasonable use, taking into account the cost of rehabilitation to meet the requirements of the building code, et cetera, et cetera. And I think here, this building or structure is not the entire building. The aspect that triggered this, this approval is just the framing. That is the only thing that is being changed from what has been approved. And the opinion of the professionals is that there's no option here really to do anything other than what Mr. Gray did, albeit the, if he could go back, he'd, he'd stop it, but he would have stopped and asked for permission. But you've seen from the photos, there's no, you know, it's new framing versus old framing. It's, it's sound newer wood versus older wood that's, that's deteriorated and rotting. So we would request that the board make the specific finding and issue the special permit so that the project can proceed and the project can be completed, which will improve the neighborhood substantially. And again, the alternative is to, to let this project sit idle for up to three years while an appeal proceeds. And then when we get to three years, what then? Someone's going to have to do something with this building. And we would submit that it doesn't really, you know, it doesn't achieve the, the intent and goal of the ordinance to keep this on ice, so to speak, for three years. Certainly the ordinance envisioned that this could happen. And it's unfortunate. We expect the historical commission, you know, I'm, I know we met with them. They're not happy. I don't expect them to be happy. I, I would not be surprised if, when they finally make their report, it's going to be, they're going to come down hard. But again, I don't, I, I don't think the alternative of just halting this is the way to go. I don't think it's good for anybody. Including from the historical perspective. So that's my presentation. Mr. Gray is here. Mr. Gannick is here to answer any questions, as am I. And, and with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
All right. This is Chairman Champetti again and Attorney Mack. Thank you very much for the detail of that presentation. And it is, it, it's very helpful to, to have the procedural history as well. Knowing as the board members fully know that this is a, a request for a DCOD special permit after the fact, as, as it were. Okay. So closing that portion of the presentation, I will then, I will now open the hearing to comments from the public and we, again, you need not speak necessarily in support or opposition by label. You can simply speak. And if you could just simply raise your hand and we will open your mic and recognize you one at a time. We do ask that you keep your comments limited to two minutes per person so that everyone has an opportunity. Let's see, we have Mr. Richards, Chairman of the Newburyport Historic Commission. Andy, why don't we, why don't we unmute Chairman Richards' mic and we'll start there?
Yeah, I think I am unmuted. Thank you. Glenn Richards, six Ken Street and as you, Ms. Champetti noted, historical commission chair. Just a couple of quick clarifications. First of all, um, there was a little, two contradictory statements in Mr. Max's presentation about was quote, "not registered on the list of historical properties," but then on a later slide noted that it is in the district data sheet as a contributing property and it does have a Form B written up by the Mass Historical Commission. So just want the, the board, your board to be clear that yeah, it, it is a noted historical property. It's a contributing property. So just wanted to be clear on that. The, there was also something in the presentation that there was no standard in the ordinance, in the ordinance to, as to how to relieve that three-year moratorium. But Andy Port, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there in the, in the ordinance, there was reference to written approval or decision or something from the historical commission could be used to, you know, how should I put it? You know, get over that, that allow a demolition permit or some kind of building permit before the three-year period. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, their applicants asked for two things to be considered by the zoning board of appeals here. One is the demolition control overlay district special permit. That's the typical permit process. The other one is this essentially an after-the-fact approval where work was done inconsistent with the ordinance, but permission is requested to move ahead for whatever reason is, is posited and then the board would have to issue permission presumably similarly asking for input from the historic commission.
Yeah. Okay. So anyway, I, I want to try to not take up too much time here. Just to the, to the board. Just to, you may already know this, but if not, the historical commission is meeting this Thursday evening and this matter is on our agenda. There's a, a draft report, but it's, it's pretty clear that it's not the final version. It needs to be gone over and it's not, you know, I don't know how the board will, what, what, where we'll end up with that after we've deliberated on it. So that will have to just wait until after we, we meet on Thursday night, but it is on our agenda. So you know, it would just have to, to wait for that particular thing. I think one of the, the things, I, I sort of have two questions and a comment. I'll make the comment first and I don't think a member of the public can exactly ask questions. So I'll just put the questions out there and then if the board finds them relevant, you can answer. The one is actually an important question to the board for me. So anyway, the comment is just that, you know, what disincentive is there in the future for a developer to do this kind of thing? Again, if, if there is essentially no penalty. So that's the comment. The question for the applicant that you can ask if you find it relevant is how is it possible, given everything that was said about the existing conditions before anything was done, that no structural survey was done at all apparently to determine if the existing structure was going to be sound enough to support the changes to the roof and, and all that. It seems almost beyond comprehension that no one bothered to check to see if that structure was okay first. And then finally, my question to you, the board, is I know you, we are charged with providing you with a historical report. And I was just wondering if there's anything beyond that, that you would like to try to get from the historical commission, any, either additional information or opinion. So if you can give me any feedback on that, that'd be great. That's, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Richards. And again, this is Rob Champetti. We, I believe we, of course, as a, and for members of the ZBA, just to take a quick momentary pause as we move through this segment of the application. It is evident and it's become palpably so, having heard from Chairman Richards that this board has sort of an incomplete dossier of information. And by that, I mean that critical to our decision-making process is not only the presentation, of course, the background research by, by the planning department to their credit, who have done a nice job putting together this material as well as comments from the public, which we are in the process of, of soliciting and will hear every one of. But also the feedback and advisory opinion from our, our sister commission, the Newburyport Historic Commission, who under the DCOD provide us advisory, opinion, counseling guidance. And so in that, it's, it's obvious that we do not yet have that. It is, it is something that the board, in my opinion, should have. And I would, I would be fairly insistent that we do have, though, though we are in the process of eliciting public comment, I will, I'm equally insistent that we will complete that process so that we hear everything that there is to be said by all those that are in attendance who wish to speak. And but with the benefit of understanding that we as a board may at the conclusion of that have to, have to make a decision to continue this matter so that the Newburyport Historic Commission can, can complete their work in, in deliberating on these matters, distilling it down to some form of opinion and/or advisory. And to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, on, on the, what this board would need, we would, we would certainly seek to have every bit of, of the counsel advice and advisory opinion of the expertise of the Newburyport Historic Commission. I think that serves the spirit of the intent of the DCOD and us having our sister board of the, the Historic Commission counsel us and, and provide advice, though not our sister board of the uh, the Historic Commission uh counsel us and and provide advice, um, though not finding it's 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 critical and expert. So we uh, we look very, you know, we we would look very um carefully at uh at you and your colleagues, having all the time you need to give us the best possible um intel, as it were. So um, with that, I just wanted to, uh, I wanted to qualify what we will do in proceeding with the completion of public comment, uh, and let those that are here in attendance know, as well as the members of the board uh procedurally, that uh we do not, in my opinion, yet have all that we need. I I I certainly will elicit um, um, uh, comment and opinions from my colleagues on the board to make sure I'm in the majority in that thinking before we proceed to um, you know, entertain a continuance. But with without deliberating further on that, um, let's continue the um, the uh public uh comment portion, and we'll go to um the next uh, next uh individuals that wish to be heard. And I do see hands from Attorney Mack. Uh, and we will certainly circle back to you, Attorney Mack. I'm just gonna go through.
I just wanted to make one comment if I could.
Sure.
And that I didn't intend uh mean to uh by having this hearing start tonight. It was not the intent of of Mr. Gray to try to jam through this application without the Historic Commission completing its review. We just wanted to to start the process um so that um, you know, we could move forward and expecting that the board would um would uh likely continue it to the next meeting to continue to complete the hearing. So I didn't want to suggest that we're trying to jam this through. We know that the Historic Commission is not done. But uh, we 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 just ask that we start the process, knowing that we can accomplish a lot in 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 this this night and uh and leave less for the second night.
I appreciate that, uh, Attorney Mack, and and I think that is a shared sentiment, certainly by me, and I I would be surprised if it wasn't by uh my colleagues. We we endeavor to get the process underway and uh move forward uh in earnest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so um, I see uh the hand of uh Mr. Coulter John. Um, Andy, if we can unmute Mr. Coulter John's mic and uh and hear from uh, from you. Tom, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Coulter John, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The Newburyport Preservation Trust strongly opposes this special permit application. The applicant's appeal for already violating the building permit and violating Newburyport zoning has not even been heard. In addition, the Newburyport Historical Commission is still reviewing the historical report to help advise you. This evening's hearing, therefore, seems premature and out of sequence. Having said that, the trust takes issue with numerous assertions made by the applicant and their paid-for reports. The applicant's demolished a historic building without permission. The submitted report by their structural engineer is after the fact and paid for by them. Had they followed the proper procedure, the Z B A would have had the opportunity to request an independent evaluation. Members of the public could have encouraged such a report at a public hearing, but were denied that opportunity. The submitted photos presented in support of demolition give a lopsided view of the situation and are far from conclusive. Several of the photos clearly show what looks like viable heavy framing that could have been saved in place. Personally, I've done such work on my own home. I firmly believe a skilled restoration team familiar with working on eighteenth-century historic homes could have saved much of this building. One of the most common repairs in Newburyport is to repair sections of sill beams which rest upon the foundation and support the frame. Another typical repair is to the bottoms of corner posts. Countless Newburyport homeowners have done this work themselves, or had carpenters do the repair. The applicant did none of these. Eighteenth-century timber-framed houses were largely overbuilt. And this is one of the reasons they have lasted so long. Typical modern repairs include augmenting or increasing existing framing when needed, rather than demolition by replacement. The applicant in slide fourteen notes no header or jack studs or king studs by the windows, et cetera. All these could easily be added prior to window replacement. Spacing of the studs can easily be augmented to meet the code. None of these are reasons to demolish a historic building. The applicant's demolished a historic building without permission. They state that the building, at one point, had fire damage. That's true, but most eighteenth-century eighteenth-century houses in Newburyport have had fires at one time or another. All of them, of course, heated with wood, but most buildings survive to this day. The trust respectfully requests that the zoning board of appeals deny this application. The D C O D is clear, and the penalty is clear. The applicants have demolished an important eighteenth-century historic building protected under the law. And the delay of a building permit should continue. This is a stunning instance of demolition caught by the city. If the owners are allowed to simply proceed, then more demolitions will surely follow. After-the-fact permitting and waived penalties will not help us to preserve our precious heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter John. Um, we have um Josh Weiss uh with a hand up. And uh, Andy, if we can unmute Mr. Weiss's mic, uh, Mr. Weiss, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for taking the time to uh to hear um our our public comments. Um, I do not have a a a pre-written statement, as was uh, was the the previous speaker. But I would like to speak on behalf of those of us that um live on this street and are raising our families here. Um, as you all know, we live in Newburyport because um, you know, we admire the the town itself, and coming with that is the historical nature of the buildings.
Mr. Weiss, may I interrupt you just to ask you to um state your address for?
I'm sorry about that. I live at thirteen Harrison Street. Um, have been there for eighteen years. My front door is approximately twenty-five feet from from twelve Harrison Street.
Thank you, sir. Please continue.
You're welcome. Sorry. Um, you've seen the pictures um of what uh, what this structure looks like now, and I I would like to really stress that extending um any sort of of uh moratorium on building will greatly in adversity affect those of us that actually live here. Um, I'm very familiar with the building across the street. I've attended all the hearings that I've um that have been able to be attended. And this structure um is being substantially improved um in in my um from what I can see. Uh, the the vinyl sign that's been removed and all the substantial investment in the property. While I understand um there have been some egregious uh removal of interior framing, um, I cannot understand how this would be equated with the demolition of a historic house. Um, and to continue this for three years while those of us um you know, uh, live here and have to to put up with um, with the delay, um I feel to be completely unjustified. And I would like to stress um that the board take into account those of us um that live here, that love this street um and um support the fact that we have a a new member of the neighborhood that is investing substantial amount of money to improve one of these structures. There are approximately, oh, actually, I think exactly ten children that live on this street that are under the age of fourteen, ride their bikes and play on the street. And for us to put up with this building in the current state of uh that it's in, yeah, I feel is completely unfair and unjust. Uh, thank you for hearing my comments, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Um, moving down uh the list, I see uh the hand up of a Mr. Mark Donovan. Uh, Andy, we can unmute Mr. Donovan's mic. And Mr. Donovan, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to uh voice my thoughts and and opinion on this matter. Um, I appreciate the hard work that you you all do on the board. Um, and having the opportunity as a member and of a a of this of um or or a citizen of Newburyport is important. So uh, my name is Mark Donovan. Uh, I live at seventeen Harrison Street. I too live in very close proximity to uh the prop, the Gray's property. Um, and uh, Josh Weiss just said, I think, um, what a lot of us on the street feel and 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 importantly, are feeling and witnessing, especially in a time where we're burdened with um being relatively closed um to what we can do, right, during this pandemic? And and um, what we have now is a project where we all envisioned, and and we do believe what will be a improvement um to the structure that uh existed before the Grays initiated their construction. And so I I I um, uh, I I just want to appeal to the betterment of uh, or or what I think would be the betterment of the city to the residents on this street, um, to the numerous people who utilize the rail trail um and to uh to common sense in hopes that we can move forward uh with a constructive outcome here. Uh, you know, I I I understand that Mr. Coulter John um is is passionate. He 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 um certainly had a very spirited uh few minutes there of comments. Um, but you know, I I I would, I I would absolutely argue whether or not he had the opportunity to inspect the property. Um, it sounds like he had a lot of um strong opinions about uh, you know, the the exactness of the property. Um, but I doubt he actually has inspected it. So I I don't know that it is worthy of dismissing everything he said, but until there's a true inspection and and real facts, you know, I I just want to counter, you know, his opinion there. And 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 I do think that um those of us who have been in the neighborhood for a long period of time and have witnessed uh the structure that existed before and are um privy to, you know, the plans for where it is going. Um, you know, I I think it's an improvement overall. I do question definitionally, definitionally and structurally, whether or not the integrity of this building, from a historical point of view, is is really um is 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 really being damaged. So um, I'll close with that, and and I hope that um, you know, the common sense can prevail here, and there can be some sensitivity around those of us who have been living with this eyesore for too long right now, and we can get on and can really um find a way to agree and and make for a better environment for all of us.
Uh, okay, uh, was that the um, was that the extent of your comments, Mr. Donovan?
That is, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, okay, I see a um Mary Jean Clavon uh with her hand up. Um, Andy, if you can unmute Ms. Clavon's mic, and uh, Ms. Clavon, you have the floor.
Good evening, all. Um, I am here with my husband, John. We are residents of eight Harrison Street. And uh support the comments of our neighbors and don't want to uh take time to repeat them, but feel strongly that we support uh also the due diligence of the City of Newburyport and all of the uh you know, volunteers involved. We are uh extremely cognizant of the work that needs to be done to preserve that which can and should be preserved in the city. Um, I also will just say, as a side note, that I did grow up in Newburyport and am one of those who sees many of the improvements made to structures and areas of the city uh you know, to be a a terrific uh improvement for all the residents. And uh I realize, Mr. Champetti, that you do not have all the information you need to make a decision this evening, but uh making this a longer and drawn-out um process so that there is a consequence for someone in the future does seem um pretty out of balance with what has gone on and um at at twelve Harrison Street and what could potentially happen in the future.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Clay, and um seeing, uh, let's see, we have we have a uh hand up by a screen named Solar Ivy, and I apologize if I'm um not capturing the correct name, but Andy, if we could go ahead and and unmute Solar Ivy. Um, the floor is yours.
Oh, hi. Good evening. This is actually George Solari. I'm here with my wife, Ivy. Uh, can you hear us?
We can, thank you.
Excellent. Um, I'm gonna keep it real short. I don't want to repeat, although we support uh what the other uh occupants in the neighborhood and on the street. We are at four Harrison Street. Uh, we've been here about a year, and we're very happy with Newburyport and uh our uh move from Florida. Uh, but my, I just want to make a a following and a hand up for our support uh for for the neighborhood, for the community. Um, we really do like neighborhood, uh, Newburyport. We really appreciate this opportunity to share with you um our feelings on this and uh just say that we too have uh had some new siding put on recently, and there was some findings of uh unexpected uh beetle rot uh in in the framing that was taken care of. Uh, so uh, i- it's not uncommon, as I'm sure everybody on the phone knows uh to find unexpected, uh, but but it's what you do with it. And that was the way we approached our house, was that we planned to be here a very long time. It's my understanding that the Grays plan on being here a long time. We've seen a lot of properties being purchased, being redone, and then sold, which I have no problem with. Um, but when the intentions seem to be legitimate for improving the neighborhood as ours, um, I do take that into account uh under the circumstance and how to move forward is always the way to solve a problem. Take the past, learn from it, and and try to incorporate what's best for the entire community. Uh, so with that, I support everybody's decision who's on his phone, who's been involved with Newburyport a lot longer than we have, and again, really appreciate the opportunity to share those comments with you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, sir. Um, I see a hand up by Ms. Stephanie Nikotic. Uh, Andy, if we could go ahead and unmute Ms. Nikotic's mic, and uh Ms. Nikotic, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikotic, ninety-three High Street. Uh, this application repeats and relies on the applicant's appeal claim that he just did not know demolishing exterior walls requires a permit. In a letter to you dated May nineteenth, twenty-twenty, also presented to the N H C, he said through his attorney, Mark Griffin, that his proposal will not trigger the requirements for a D C O D special permit. The demolition threshold was not reached as no exterior building walls are being demolished. I understand that before the official stop-work order from the building department during a foundation inspection, former deputy building commissioner Bob Armstrong orally ordered that exterior wall demolition demolition stop, but it didn't. So the honest mistake claim is not credible. Also, there is the serious question if you can make the required finding of fact after the fact and based not on substantial evidence, but photographs and a belated structural report from one of the applicant's own contractors. These issues were discussed by the Historical Commission during their advisory review, but as you noted, you do not yet have their final report. I hear the neighbors. I'm sympathetic uh with what they're going through. But in the broader public interest, I ask that you do not allow zoning enforcement to be circumvented and wrongful demolition to be rewarded with an after-the-fact special permit approval and that you do not waive the construction moratorium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotic. Um, and uh, I see the hand of uh Mr. Donald Flanders. Um, Andy, if we could go ahead and unmute Mr. Flanders' mic, and Mr. Flanders, you have a floor, sir.
And um, Donald, you'll need to unmute on your end as well.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, sir. Thank you.
Okay. As I mentioned, I live at two ninety-six Water Street, not far from Harrison. I've lived here almost twenty years, and my mother built the original house here almost fifty years ago. So I've been roaming the neighborhood for an awful long time. And I just want to reinforce what I heard from several of the neighbors on, on Harrison Street. I've noticed just the transformation over the years of people investing a lot of money in beautifying their homes and remodeling. And the street is, I think, one of the more impressive streets now in the South End. And I was delighted when I saw that someone had purchased the property at twelve Harrison. It definitely seemed like it needed some tender loving care with the siding and the foundation and that the staircase, I think it went to a second-story level. You could see from the rail trail. It looked like that was not a very sturdy structure. Anyway, I was just delighted that someone wanted to sink money into our neighborhood. And from what I had read, they wanted to live here, not spin it out as someone had mentioned. And, and I understand that something that the internal structure, and that's beyond my capability, but just from willingness to summon to choose Newburyport, to, for another city, to invest a lot of money to buy that, and I'm sure a heck of a lot of money to, to renovate it, and to see what it looks like now and to walk by it. I support the neighbors on Harrison Street that I hope a remedy other than seeing the condition of that house for any great length of time. I hope there's another remedy, and if there is, I would support it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flanders, for your comments. Seeing the final two hands raised, I note Attorney Mack and Mr. Gray. We haven't heard from Mr. Gray, so I'll recognize Mike Gray, and you have the floor, sir.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I can say.
Yes, hi, it's Mike Gray. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I just wanted to make a couple corrections. I'm not a developer. I am the, the owner. And yes, I did make the mistake, mine solely to take down the framing. Assuming that it wasn't the original framing, I didn't realize that anybody would have an issue with it. Sadly mistaken. And then the other correction I need to make is that there was never any knowledge to me that the building inspector had put a stop-work order on. I got a notice from the building inspector when the stop-work order was issued, and we stopped. During the foundation inspection, one of my employees was present, who stood the inspection, and he approved the inspection, and that was that. There was never anything said about stopping work. So I just felt like I had to make those corrections.
Okay, was there anything else, Mr. Gray?
No, nope. I, I'll let Mr. Mack take it.
All right, thank you, sir. And Attorney Mack, I believe you are the last, the last hand standing, as they say.
For tonight, anyway, right? So I guess I'm going to be brief. I, I, I understand the, the sentiment that, well, we need to, we need to address the fact that if, if the penalty, the maximum penalty is not imposed, then all applicants are going to run roughshod over the ordinance and just plow ahead and, and seek forgiveness later. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and I also appreciate the important work that the Historical Commission and the Preservation Trust plays, play in, in, you know, property governance and, and enforcement of the zoning rules. But I think there's some proportionality that needs to be considered here. I, I appreciate that. I mean, it's a heavy penalty, and I would submit that, that, you know, Mr. Gray has already, has already suffered quite a bit from a financial standpoint, from an emotional standpoint, from not being able to move forward with the project. And, you know, there are many times where, where I've seen neighbors completely opposed to the project because the proponent is seeking to, you know, fit a square peg in a round hole or, or expand and, and really make something that doesn't fit into the neighborhood. This is universally supported by the neighborhood, and I, I, I appreciate that this is an old building and that it's, it, there's a purpose to the statute, but I also think some proportionality needs to be considered. There's a three-year moratorium, but, you know, where, why is that the penalty as opposed to two years, one year, six months, three months? It's, it's, it's a very, very, very harsh penalty, not just to the Grays, but to the, to the city and, and to the neighborhood, most importantly. So I, I understand that, all the comments, but I think that, that I just reiterate that he's, he's suffered a significant penalty. Finally, the one comment I would say about, I think it was to the initial comments about this being out of order. I, I don't think it serves anyone to have to go forward with the appeal of a zoning violation and then potentially litigation to determine the validity of the zoning violation. And then to return years and thousands and thousands of dollars of time and money, you know, having been spent on court processes when it seems like a more practical solution makes sense. And, you know, I make a living as a litigator, but this is not a situation where I think it makes sense to wait to resolve this until the appeal can be heard. I think the opposite should be taken to avoid litigation if possible. And that's why we've continued the appeal and hope to never reach it, because it's a, it's a significant undertaking, not just for Mr. Gray, but for the city, which will have to deal with, you know, litigation, and that's, that's in no one's interest here. So that's, that's all I had to add.
Thank you, Attorney Mack, and the last hand that I see up is still Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, is that just an error, or do you wish to be heard further?
No, my mistake. I apologize.
Very good. Thank you, sir, and thank you to everyone. Seeing no further hands, thank you to every member of the public who's taking, taking your, your thoughtful and careful and detailed time to, to share your comments with members of the board in, in this somewhat unique circumstance. It's, it's critical for we as a volunteer administrative board to elicit all of the information we can. In that spirit, and as the chairman, I am going to go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. And as I alluded to earlier, further in the spirit of, I, what I believe to be my role as the chairman, as well as the spirit of obtaining all of the information there is to be had so that we may weigh it all in our best efforts to try to arrive at a sensible and a thoughtful and, and logical conclusion as a, as a board. I am going to propose that, by way of a motion, that this board consider suspending the, the application for the moment and continuing it to such time, and I believe we have a date, so as to allow for the Newburyport Historic Commission's advisory work to, to to continue and hopefully conclude with some resulting advisory opinion, input or further information. And I, to just point out, this is, there is great gravity to this application, both, both for and against. The gravity is that we as a city and as members of a volunteer board, serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals and other boards and commissions, we all sort of participate in the fabric that becomes the result in our community. Historic preservation, development, thoughtful growth, smart growth, and everything in between is all included in that sort, in that alchemy of, of administrative work. And so in the spirit of aspiring to the best possible result, I think it's wise for we as a board to, to recognize that there is, it's a factual finding here that has yet to be proven, but it's, you know, to just, to just demonstrate that, that, assuming it is proven that there was a demolition beyond the scope of the ZBA approval, and it appears that there was. But, but just to lay out the, you know, the mechanics of the, the code, the Newburyport zoning, zoning ordinance under section twenty-eight E eight imposes a three-year moratorium. Now, there are two boards that, that bear the, the authority and discretion to relieve, attenuate, modify, or completely absolve, or enforce that, that moratorium. One is the Newburyport Historic Commission, and through its advisory, the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals. So, so before we endeavor into that gravity of, of a result, having heard passionately from members of the, the abutting community and neighborhood in particular, as well as stakeholders with the Newburyport Preservation Trust and others, I think it's in our best interest as board to, to entertain a motion to continue, allow the Newburyport Historic Commission to complete their work, to render some further advice, and to revisit this with the benefit of all of the, as they say, newsprint. So with that, and as the chair, I'm going to make a motion for the consideration of, of my colleagues that, that the board consider suspending the further progress of the application, having concluded public comment, but deferring questions from the board and deliberations to a, the meeting of December eighth, which I believe will give enough time. And Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, is that sufficient time to allow the Newburyport Historic Commission to, to have their meeting and complete? I guess you wouldn't be able to say whether it's enough time for them to complete their work, but will they at least have time to meet?
I, yes, that's definitely the case. They will be able to meet, and I do believe that they should be able to do so prior to that time.
Okay, so in the event that we find that that's not the case, this board can undertake, you know, further extent, a further continuance to allow for the intent, at least the intent of my motion anyway, assuming it meets with the approval of the board. Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue, or I'm sorry, actually, as chair, I can't make a motion. I will, I will invite a, a member of the ZBA to undertake my thoughts and present a motion to continue the application to the meeting of December eighth. Do we, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, it's Rachel Webb. I just want to call your attention to our staff report, which mentioned the continuation to the meeting of November twenty-fourth, not the December eighth meeting.
I heard that, but I also, I heard from the chair of the Historic Commission, and, and correct me if, if I, if I misunderstood that. I, I thought that it sounded as though they, their meeting was, won't have con, I, I don't know. Am I mistaken? Did they, is that going to give them enough time?
This is Andy, and Rachel, I, I understand that we had noted that in the staff report. I think based on where things are right now, the eighth would probably make more sense because the Historic Commission is meeting again to discuss this this Thursday. It would be nice to see if a advisory opinion comes out of that particular meeting, but if the commission needed any more time, you know, continuing this hearing to the eighth would make sure that the commission can finish that process.
Okay, whatever.
Well, I mean, so my, my thoughts notwithstanding, Ms. Webb, I mean, if you feel the, the, the members of the board may make whatever motion, if any, motion they feel is appropriate, you know, under the circumstances. I'm just trying to afford the additional time by suggestion that, that would give us a, you know, a more complete body of material from the Historic Commission so that we can continue and hopefully conclude.
Right, if they're meeting this week, though, I would think they could, I don't know. I, I would, I would make a motion to propose to continue it to the meeting of November twenty-fourth.
Okay, do we have a, so a motion been made to continue the application to the meeting of the twenty-fourth? Do we have a second? Going once, going twice. Seeing no hands in second. The motion fails to, to move to a vote. So, Ms. Webb, it looks like there's no, no members are presenting to second that motion. Do you wish to revisit your motion, or?
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue to the zoning board meeting of December eighth.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. The motion is now represented by Ms. Webb to continue the matter to the meeting of December eighth. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Moore.
All right, motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries, and the application is continued to the meeting of December eighth. And to all of those members of the public and applicants alike and representatives, thank you for your time and your patience and your thoughtful comment. We will look forward to continuing this on December eighth. Moving to the next matter on our agenda, we have the application of one fifty-nine Water Street. This is the, the application of Nicholas Hansis, care of Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellerman, and Costa. The application address one fifty-nine Water Street, a special permit for non-conformities, documented zero seven six of twenty twenty, to raise the roof on a rear one-and-a-half-story addition and make it a second-story space on a pre-existing non-conforming structure. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellerman, Costa, thirty Green Street in Newburyport. On behalf of Nick Hansis, who is the purchaser of this property. As the chair said, this is a request for special permit to modify pre-existing non-conforming structure. Andy, if you could go to the first slide, please. So many of you will be familiar with this property. If you drive down Water Street at all, it is the property that is immediately adjacent to the entrance to the wastewater treatment plant in the city. It is located in the WMD district. And the proposal is to renovate the structure, which needs some loving care, and then raise the one-and-a-half-story rear addition so that it is a full two-story addition. In addition, there'll be some relocation of windows. But other than that, there is no proposal to modify the structure itself. If I could go to the next slide, please. So this is, this structure has an interesting history. We've been before the Historic Commission already, who has already approved our plans. It was built, the original structure was built around eighteen fifty, which is the front part of the structure. Then there was a later added middle addition, and then a later added end addition. And it's the end addition we are proposing to modify. It's a two-bedroom, two-story structure, sixteen hundred and twenty square feet of living area, very low ceilings. The property is complicated. It's in the WMD, the DCOD, as well as the AE zone. The rear part of that property dips down towards the river. It's immediately adjacent to the sewer treatment plant, as I suggested. It's pre-existing non-conforming for lot area, lot coverage, frontage, front and side yard setbacks. The parking for the property is actually located on an easement adjacent to it, and the structure and property otherwise complies, as it were, to the dimensional requirements. If you can go to the next slide, please. So here's the property you all might remember. So if you see the lower level of that roof in the back, that's the proposal to go up, to be to the same height as the existing front of the structure. Next slide, slide, please, Andy. And this is the front of the structure. And the next slide. And then you have the east side of the structure. That's if you were traveling towards downtown on Water Street. And the next slide. And here's one of the side views of the east side a little closer, and the next slide. And this is the westerly side of the side that's adjacent to the sewer treatment plant where the entry is. And you can see this rear one-and-a-half-story addition, which we're proposing to go up on, which is the reason, that roof line change was the reason for the DC, excuse me, the Historic Commission demo review. And the next slide, please, Andy. And then here's a further away view of the westerly side of the property. So the next slide, please. So here's the existing first floor footprint. That footprint is not going to change. How it's used will change. One of the things we're going to note is that because it's in the AE zone, the work that's going to be done is to take, part of the work is going to be to take all of the mechanicals out of the basement and put them in the attic. Next slide, please, Andy. Again, this is the exec, existing second floor footprint, floor plan. And the next slide, please. And here's the existing front elevation on your right and the existing rear. And here's the existing front elevation on your right, and the existing rear elevation. Again, on that rear elevation, that's what we're changing. And go to the next slide, please. And here we have the existing side. So you can see that, that board in the middle of this, of the structure, that separates the first and second addition, and then the third addition is the end. And next slide, please. These also show the elevation changes, the topography changes toward the river from Water Street as it goes back. And the next slide, please, Andy. So, the idea is to renovate the dilapidated structure, raise the rear portion of the roof, relocate some windows, and then not have any other alterations. And the next slide, please. And here's a table which shows exactly what's happening of the existing condition. So as you can see, the WMD requires, oh, that R2 is incorrect. We're sorry about that. The WMD requires 10,000 square feet of area, and there is 2,963 square feet in the, in the, in the actual property. The frontage is 31.93, where 90 feet are required, and the height is 25 required, and we have 20 feet. The lot coverage is 33.5. I've, the open space is 64.9. The front setback is 0.2 feet. That's not changing. Neither of the side setbacks are changing at 4.3 or 8.65. The rear setback is 40.3. That's not changing. And of course, the FAIR does not apply here. And next slide, please. So here's the footprint of the house. And you can see what we're doing in the rear of the property. Just going up, so we're exacerbating the side setbacks. And if you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here was the demo plan that was used, but again, you can see nothing's happening to the front. In the rear, you can see that gable end is being removed on the addition on the rear. And then a new addition is going to be on top of that. And you go to the next slide, please, Andy. And here are the window changes on this elevation along with the replacement of those window locations. And the next slide, please, Andy. And so here again, on the left side elevation or the west elevation, you can see the changes in the window locations. Largely, it's a result of those window locations because the change of use on the inside of the building to what currently exists. Next slide, please, Andy. And here's the floor plan. So what's happening is the bedrooms are going to be located on the first floor as opposed to the second floor. And the living, actual living space will be on the second floor. So we have two bedrooms and bathrooms and entryways on the first floor. Next slide, Andy. And then on the proposed second floor plan, you can see we have a family room out front towards Water Street and the living space of the kitchen in the rear. And what you see, the new living space is a half bath, essentially in a pantry. And in that pantry is a hatch to the attic, which is where the mechanicals are going to go. The, the other part of that addition on the rear that's being changed is it's actually going to become a balcony so that there's some outdoor space and a view over to the river since the grass area in the back is pretty close to the sewer treatment plant facilities. And the next slide, please, Andy. So here's what the proposed front elevation is. As you can see, it's absolutely the same as it is today. And then the proposed rear elevation. You'll see the difference in materials. One of the things that that's important, when, you know, you have additions on original structures, is to somehow differentiate the new from the old. Given that the height is so small, the architect is proposing the differentiation being in siding materials. So the newer additions in the rear are going to have clavards, and the front is going to have the siding, cedar siding. And the next slide, please, Andy. And again, you can see the addition on the rear that's being proposed, and actually, this actually also has the flood vents added into it. And the next slide, please, Andy. And again, this is the west side elevation. So you can see, this is the differentiation of the original, original structure. We're using that board in the middle, the corner board in the middle, to differentiate the new, the newer from the oldest, shall we say. And the next slide, please, Andy. So, under 9B2A, the board needs to make two findings. One, that there will be not any new non-conformities, and in this instance, there won't be, there will only be the exacerbation of the side yard setbacks with the upward extension. And that the changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. Here, the applicant proposes to renovate the rear exterior of this existing single-family home, while the current structure is in disrepair, and applicant, the applicant seeks to renovate the single-family home and reuse it for the same purpose. The structure's footprint and front face and elevations remain the same. The proposed renovations will include making the roof line consistent, so there's no longer a differentiation between the historic residents and the later additions. And the applicant will seek to make those window changes as we proposed on the structure. Further, since it lays in the AE flood elevation, all mechanical systems are going to be moved from the basement to the attic space in conformance with the FEMA construction requirements. And the flood vents will be installed. For those reasons, we believe that the project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And we would request the board approves same. And as I said earlier, the Historic Commission has already reviewed this project and released it for, from the demolition delay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. We will close that portion of the public hearing, the presentation portion, and go to the public comment section. Any member of the public who wishes to speak in support or opposition, just please raise your hand, give your name and your address, and kindly try to limit your comments to two minutes. Let's see, we have, one hand, Chairman Glenn Richards of the Newburyport Historic Commission, Mr. Richards.
Thank you, Chair Champetti, Glenn Richards, Sixth County Street. Just a couple very brief comments. One minor correction. The approval from the, of the plans by the Historical Commission was conditional on provision of additional details, which the applicant has provided. I think you saw some of those details on the plans that were shown tonight. So that condition was met. And the, should just point out to the, or let the, the board know that at the Historical Commission, a couple of members expressed the fact, or their view, that overall, they felt that the project would, would result in not a deterioration, but rather an improvement to the neighborhood because of the, the rather sorry condition of the property as it is, and the fact that despite that slight upward extension, they were making other changes that we viewed as improvements in terms of the materials and windows and so on. So, so it was generally looked upon favorably. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Richards. Anyone else wishing to speak in connection with the application? Seeing no hands, going once, going twice. We will close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Let's see, we'll start with Mr. Moore.
I have no questions, Chairman. It was very thorough.
Thank you. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question. And it's really only for my own curiosity. Attorney Mead, could, could you explain what the, the flood vents are?
Mr. Delisle, no, I can't, except for that they are required in the AE zone. If this, for this kind of construction, that's an architect's question. I'm not sure if it is a measure of reducing the pressure against a foundation should a flood occur or not. I will tell you, the mechanicals, in order to meet the FEMA guidelines here, have to be moved to the attic. But I can't tell you the, the engineering or scientific reason why the flood vents are required.
This is Andy Port, the planning director. This issue comes up quite a bit on Plum Island or a similar issue where there, there is, for the reason Attorney Mead stated, this is typically the reason why you want these flood vents is to reduce the amount of force that is on the side of a house or a structure if it gets impacted by wave action or storm surge from, say, the flooding Merrimack River.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Attorney Mead. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I was, I was honestly curious.
Yeah, Mr. Delisle, I didn't feel like you were putting me in the spot. I laughed because Mr. Richards asked me the same question at the Historic.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
Mr. Delisle asked my question.
All right. So, Mr. Delisle, you owe Ms. Webb a question. Okay, moving on then to Mr. Swanton.
No, I, I mean, I go past this quite a bit. I think it's a huge improvement. So I really, I thought the presentation was quite thorough. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Swanton. I too have no further questions. So we can conclude and close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. And again, because we are deliberating a special permit for non-conformities, we would need to find that the application will not substantially, not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And of course, when making this finding, we as a board may consider factors such as size scale, massing volume, as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. And I also will note that, based on our staff report, the application does trigger the street, the tree and sidewalk ordinance, and the applicant has confirmed that the project, since it'll be substantially rehabilitated, the, they have reached out to DPS for tree and sidewalk recommendations. It looks like DPS has responded that there are no room for new street trees and the existing sidewalk is sufficient. So we can proceed with our deliberations around that, starting with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I thought the presentation was, was very thorough. I, I agree with, I think, with everyone's opinion that a little TLC is exactly what the structure needs. It was, it's well thought out, well presented, makes all the changes necessary that would need to be necessary abutting the river, as it does, doesn't create any new non-conformities, can't be a detriment to the neighborhood when it's improving the structure as much as it, it will. So I'm, I'm in full support for those reasons.
Okay. Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with, with Mr. Moore. This looks like a, a well-thought-out project. And another project that, you know, that we see here at the ZBA that, where you have a, a structure that, that may have seen better days, and it looks like it's going to see those better days in the future. Again, good for, for us as citizens of, of Newburyport. I can fully support this project.
Very good. Let's see, Ms. Webb?
I too can support this project. I think my colleagues have, have made very good points. I like that the Historic Commission has already passed their muster on this. And I also like that the applicant is showing the new addition with definitively separate materials to distinguish between the new addition and the, the existing. I neglected to ask during the question period, the comment in our staff report about how this application may also require review by the Conservation Commission. I don't know if Andy Port might be able to comment on that at this point or not.
Mr. Yeah, this is just jurisdictional. I wouldn't expect any problems with the Conservation Commission, if that's the question.
Well, the staff report says may also require review. Isn't that a yes or no question?
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, go, go ahead, Attorney Mead.
So, the may require is depending on if there's any work to be done in the yard. So, and, and depends on how close up. So we're filing an ANRAD to make that determination with the Conservation Commission. And because there's a patio out back, and so they have a, they have a review that they have to do relative to that. So we will be filing an ANRAD with, with the Conservation Commission.
Okay, thanks, Attorney Mead.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Yes, I can support this for the reasons others and I have already said. I'd also like to add that it's very helpful to have the chair of the Historic Commission chiming in on these calls. And that adds to this project as well. So I can support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Swanton, and I, I concur. I would have nothing further to add. I think all of my colleagues have mentioned all of the high points that, that I felt as well. So with that, we'll conclude. The deliberations portion of the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Moore here, I'll make a motion to approve Special Permit for Non-Conformities, 2020-076 for 159 Water Street.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Very good. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle and Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the application is approved. Congratulations and thank you for, for the presentation. And thank you, Chairman Richards, for the commentary from the Newburyport Historic Commission. Okay, moving to the next application, we have the application of 3 Hancock Street. The applicant, James Bork Construction, Inc., care of Lisa Mead, Mead, Talaman and Costa. This is application 077 of 2020, a special permit for non-conformities to raise part of the roof of a pre-existing non-conforming structure by 20 inches. And I see that Attorney Mead is presenting. May we hear from the applicant, Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with me this evening is Scott Brown, the architect for the project as well. I'm here on behalf of James Bork Construction, who is the owner of the property. And this property is noted as at 3 Hancock Street in Newburyport, and it's in the R2 zoning district. The property contains a three-bedroom, single-family home built in around 1,800, according to the Newburyport Historic data sheets. And so if you could move to the next slide, please, Andy. So the proposal is to raise the roof in the rear behind the ridge 20 inches. I'm going to let Scott go through the details about why that's necessary. But we shall say that it is a very small petite house on Hancock Street, which we are trying to do as little as possible to, to make it livable. There is no change in the roof pitch. There are no other alterations of the dimensional non-conformities, other than by this upward extension on the rear portion of the structure. If you go to the next slide, please. So we have been in front of the Historic Commission because we are changing the roof line. They have not completed their review. We had a discussion relative to, and I'm glad Mr. Richards is here because he can chime in on this later, relative to how that 20 inches should be attained in the rear. And there was a concern about the, the loss of and/or movement of the chimney, which is now not going to happen. So we can talk about that in a little bit after Scott is done with that. We are back in front of the Historic Commission on, on Thursday. I would suggest, and we can talk in a minute about that, that regardless of the decision of the Historic Commission, the relief being sought from this board will not change because it's still the 20 inches upward extension on those sidelines. So, there's, this is three bedrooms. It's 1,354 square feet of living area. The ceiling heights are under six foot, six inches, and some lower in certain parts of the house. As I said, it's built in around 1,800. It's in the R2 DCOD, but we don't trigger the DCOD. The property is pre-existing non-conforming for lot area, frontage, lot coverage, front yard setback, side yard setback. It's a petite house on a petite lot. The structure and property otherwise comply with the dimensional requirements. If you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here's the house. This is right off of Braunfield Street at the beginning of Hancock. So many of you may recognize that it's on the left-hand side. And then you go to the next house, please. Next slide, please, Andy. And here is the side, both sides of the house. And the next slide, please, Andy. And I'm, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to review the architectural plans in these existing conditions.
Great. Well, thank you, Lisa. Andy, could you please turn to the proposed elevations, page 10? Great. Well, well, thank you. So this is an old quirky house with with lots of issues. The biggest issue that we've encountered is is lack of ceiling height. And as already mentioned, most of the house has ceiling heights of six foot, six inches with some significant areas on the second floor as low as five foot 11 inches. That is not habitable space by by anyone's standards. This this is not the first time that I've had a project with low unworkable ceilings, but this project is certainly the worst that I've had to deal with. In the in the past, with with some of my past projects, I've been able to either drop the first floor level or go up adding some roof dormers to the house in in order to achieve, you know, more height. With this project, neither of those scenarios are an option. We are already too low with the first floor. So lowering it i- is just not not an option. We're already too low to the ground. So lowering it is not an option. And the shallow roof slopes on the back of the house where we have most of our unworkable ceiling height issues really make dormers prohibitive. So we've been very careful with our our design to only get what we need without altering the character of the house. And as you can see from our proposed elevations here in the lower right hand corner, we are proposing ceiling heights of only about seven foot, six inches. So these are workable ceiling heights, but certainly not gracious by by any means. One of the things that we've been careful about is maintaining the proportional relationship of the the lower roof slope in the back of the house. If you could zoom out for me, Andy. Looking at the lower left hand elevation. So one of the things that we're very careful extraordinarily careful about trying to maintain is the relationship of this lower slope to the upper steeper roof pitch. You know, the left side of this house that we're seeing here is is pretty prominent when turning onto Hancock Street from from Bromfield. It's it's one of the first things that you see. And and when raising or altering this roof, I think it is very important that we maintain these existing relationships because they are integral to the character of the house. So on the side, if we could zoom back out again. So on the sides and and rear of the house, we are proposing new window and door locations. But at the front of the house, we are not changing the location of the front door, nor are we changing any of the locations of the windows. And as already mentioned, the existing chimney, which is in great shape, will remain. The style of new front entry surround that we're proposing here and the the six over six windows will be consistent with what would have been on this house when originally built. And you can also see from some of the material notes that we've included with this application, which do include a note about using cedar siding that from these notes, you can see that we are proposing a a high quality project. So I I think in in summary, I think what we are proposing here is restrained. I think it's reasonable. You know, the roof height only changes 20 inches in this front elevation. And what we are most importantly, what we are doing does not change the character of the house. And I certainly hope that the board agrees with me. And with that, I will hand it back to Attorney Mead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. So Andy, if you could go to the table. It's two slides up from this, I think. There we go. So as you can see, this is not a large lot, 2,167 square feet. It has inadequate frontage. It does in the height. I I think it's important to see the height. So the height is 18 because you measure it to the mean, right? And the proposed height is 18.75. This is not a tall structure. The lot coverage isn't changing. The open space isn't changing. None of the setbacks are changing. And of course, it meets the rear setback. So the exacerbation of those right and left side setbacks are what is being impacted by the increase in the the ridge height. So Andy, if you could go to slide 11, please. So the board needs to make two chain, two determinations. One will be there any be any new nonconformities, and the answer is no. And then the second is whether or not the proposed changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. So we believe that that won't be. We propose to raise the roof height by 20 inches as shown on the elevations that Scott has gone over. Other than the changes, the windows, there's no other structural, we're not moving the envelope, if you will, of the of the project. And it's not going to affect the footprint of the structure or its relationship to the lot. You'll note that it could go back somewhat on this lot, but the applicant is not proposing to do that. He really is truly proposing to keep the character of the house intact. The project increases the height of the new home, but it's well under what the median roof height requirements are in the R2 district and certainly well under what all of the surrounding properties are. Based upon the foregoing, we believe the project is not more detrimental, not substantially more detrimental or detrimental at all than the existing structure to the neighborhood due to the raising of the roof by 20 inches. I've also provided to the board five letters of support from the abutters relative to this project. And we hope that the board can consider granting this proposal because again, I believe, notwithstanding the fact that the Historic Commission hasn't completed their review of it, the relief sought by this board, that is, the increase in intensity of the sideline setback will not change. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Attorney Mead. Closing that portion of the presentation, we will go to public comment. And Andy put up that slide again, if we could, for public comment. And I see we have one hand so far. Chairman Glenn Richards, we'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Richards. You have the floor.
Yes, Glenn Richards, 610th Street. Again, this is getting to be a thing. Anyway, just very briefly. Ms. Mead was correct that we are hearing this again this Thursday. I I think there's a good chance that we'll be able to resolve the issue this week. But of course, can't guarantee that. We'll have to see how the board feels about the the changes to that they have made. She what the way Ms. Mead characterized it is correct in that the the chimney, you know, was a concern. And so the fact that that's going to be, you know, not changing that, that's definitely a plus. But again, we'll have to see what the what the commission feels. One other, one minor, well, maybe not minor. I'm pretty sure I heard Attorney Mead stated at the beginning, one of the first slides, that the ridge height is not changing. But obviously, you can see that the ridge height is changing. The it's going to be what 20 inches higher or whatever it is. So anyway, just wanted to make sure that that was quite clear. And I think that's about it. It's I guess it'll be up to you whether to, you know, continue to until you see how this pans out at the NHC or if you want to, you know, or do something else. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richards. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing no hands, going once, twice. We will close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. And we'll we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Once again, thorough presentation. I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. And Mr. Delisle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a just a couple of questions. I guess these would be probably for Mr. Brown. What what are the materials that you were using on the that door? The door frame, I guess it would be. Which it 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 looks like you you've improved the the door frame, door surround for the front door. I was curious as to what those materials.
Yeah, exactly. What what we're trying to what we're trying to do here is to put something on the house again, you know, which would what would have been there when the house was built originally. And with this, we're proposing a a, you know, a wood door. The trim surrounding it will be made of a rot resistant composite materials that will be painted. And, you know, we're using those products in and around a lot. Most people are using those products in and around the city. And when they're painted, at the end of the day, they do appear to be sort of authentic products and and they hold paint well and they do last forever. And both of those things are, those are both good things.
That is true. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Very good. Ms. Webb?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I I think it's a good presentation. I guess my only question, I mean, I like it as is. My only question is the Historical Commission kind of said, well, you could wait for our report, but is their report, does it directly bear on what we're deciding here? Or is it other factors that they are considering in their own domain?
So thank you, Mr. Swanton. I think that's a good question. They are deciding on the the ridge chain, I mean, the change of the roof height, right? And when we originally proposed this to them for three or four weeks ago, I don't recall many, how many now? We were actually moving the chimney. And actually, there was a proposal. Yeah, it was a proposal to move the chimney. And that gave them a lot of consternation. And so and Mr. Brown went through a couple iterations on how to get the height that he needed, one of which was what we have proposed. So the but the relief is the same. It's a 20 inch ridge height, you know, raising. So the impact on your decision is whether or not that 20 inch increase is acceptable and substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not. And so I don't think it matters what the Historic Commission says, like it's if they approve an iteration of this. We're hopeful, of course, that they approve this. I think this meets all the things that they said, but the impact is the 20 inch impact or extension of those sideline setbacks.
I see. Well, thank you for your answer. Appreciate it.
Okay, and I I too have no further questions that haven't been already addressed. I feel it was complete and very detailed presentation. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. And again, this is a special permit for nonconformity. So in deliberating, we must as a board determine whether or not the applicant has met their burden and are we must in in finding that they have, we must find that there has that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity and that there that there will be no new nonconformity. The board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming user structure. And of course, the board in finding that must consider factors such as size, scale, massing and volume as compared to other structures in the neighborhood. And also, and I'll note, the application does not appear to trigger the street tree and sidewalk ordinance. So let us as a board deliberate with those criteria in mind. Moving to deliberations, then, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I think it's a a thoughtful treatment of this historic building. I I don't find the the 20 inch roof line to be offensive or in any way more detrimental to the neighborhood on its face. I appreciate Mr. Richards, what I would consider cautiously optimistic comments on on the changes. And I would agree that if if as a board, we are just looking at the fact there's no new nonconformities and we're merely giving the special permit permission basically for 20 inches up with the sensitivity that the architect and the owner has made to keeping with the roof lines, you know, at at the request and in concert with the Historic Commission. I can certainly support moving this forward ahead of the meeting Thursday with the NHC, given that it's it'll be subject to the demo delay being lifted anyway. And anything above the 20 inches presented, I'm sure we'll have to come back.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Yeah, I would concur with with Mr. Moore. Again, I would also like to mention Mr. Richards' work and tonight in coming and speaking about this application as well as the many others that he's addressed also. It's good to get sort of the the preview as to what the Historic Commission will be most likely doing. So I think we can I can support this being a long subject to the Historical Commission's approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I agree with both Mr. Delisle and Mr. Moore. I can support this application. You know, condition on the NHC's decision later this week.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Yes, and I too can support it. I think they all said it really well. I mean, from my point of view, it's not substantially more detrimental. It's an improvement. So I can enthusiastically support this.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. And Rob Champetti, I I concur with my colleagues and I too can support it. Having concluded deliberations, we will close that portion of the public hearing. Members of the ZBA may have a motion. And if you're crafting a motion and you wish to condition it with anything regarding the Newburyport Historic Commission, just please make that note in your motion.
Mr. Delisle, I'll make the motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for three Hancock Street. File number 2020 dash zero seven seven, subject to the subject to approval from the Historical Commission to move forward.
Second, Ken Swanton?
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton, motions made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the application is approved. Congratulations and thank you to everyone for your participation, applicants, Attorney Mead and Chairman. So moving now to the to the final matter that we had originally by motion moved to the end of our agenda. This is the matter of Ryan McShara, Red Barn Architecture, 468th Street. In that I must continue to recuse myself from this application, I will be stepping down, turning over the gavel to our Vice Chair, Mr. Moore, who will take over from here. And in that it's the last application of the evening, I'll also be logging off. So thank you all and good luck and enjoy the rest of the evening. With that, Mr. Moore, you you have the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Our last item tonight is, as the Chairman said, 468th Street. And as some may recall, this application was voted reopened by the board after an open discussion of new analysis was provided by Board Member Ken Swanton at our 1013 meeting. Some will also recall that this application began in May and was continued multiple times over the course of the summer. It is requested demolish an existing nonconforming structure and construct a new two story structure with an additional 639 square feet and parking below. During earlier presentations, where several board members expressed great concern with respect to FAR data, and after several contingencies to allow the applicant to refine their data, the applicant returned on September 8th to provide updated information with respect to the floor area ratio or FAR of the proposed structure and the surrounding neighborhood. After the presentation of the revised FAR data on the 8th, the abutter continued to question the accuracy of the ratios presented by the applicant, given that the abutter did not agree with the value assigned to their own home. Despite the abutters concern, the board considered all of the information provided on the 8th and voted to approve the application. I will note that during the time Mr. Swanton requested a clear table of values to view during the questions and discussions during that meeting on the 8th. Subsequent to the September 8th meeting and before the decision was issued or filed with the city clerk, Mr. Swanton began reevaluating the data and presented his findings to the board during that 1013 Zoom meeting as he had renewed concerns over the information the board had used in the decision making process in approving the application. Tonight, we find ourselves with a reopened application and additional information in the form of a memo from our zoning administrator. The memo provides the calculus she uses in determining the FAR. The memo provides the calculus she uses in determining the F A R as guided by the new report zoning ordinance. With respect to the Piad or the Plum Island overlay district. This memo has also guided the applicant in a resubmission of F A R data to support their application. It is with that backdrop that I ask uh again to hear from the applicant.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Me, Me Talon and Cost, thirty Green Street, on behalf of Holly and Jeff McDonald, who owned four sixty eighth street. And with me this evening, the architect, uh, Ryan McTray, um, to um present this application again to the board. Um, I'm going to do an overview of the application in addition to a little bit deeper dive um on the F A R. Uh, the board has received our filing again, in addition to a letter from Mr. McTray regarding his earlier calculations. So if you could go to the um first slide, please. So this is an application to, for a special permit to modify pre-existing nonconforming structure. And a special permit for an increase in F A R over the point two five required under the ordinance. Um, as the, as the chair noted, uh, we received a special permit on the September eighth meeting. And since that time, uh, a member of the board and other members have um discussed a concern about a discrepancy in the F A R numbers presented. Um, the architect noted in his letter to the board, he took the total gross square footage from the assessor's records. For the surrounding properties without account for the deductions for those portions of those numbers, which may not have been included in the F A R definition. For his comparison, thus not providing the board with an apple-to-apple comparison as previously requested. To the extent reasonably possible and with best efforts, the F A R numbers for the comparison purposes for the surrounding homes have been redone. And to the extent they possibly, they have possibly been verified as a, from a view from the street. These numbers were also compiled, having received the zoning code enforcement officers interpretation of F A R for the island, which she recently issued. So, um, again, this is a project in the Piad. The um property is pre-existing nonconforming for lot area, frontage, front yard setback, side, and the side B setback. The structure and property otherwise conform to the Piad requirements. If you go to the next slide, please. So as you can see, we're actually improving some of the dimensional requirements in the proposed conditions. The property is four thousand six hundred and forty-two square feet, where twelve thousand required, has fifty-five feet of frontage, where a hundred and twenty is required. The height is currently fourteen feet. It's one and a half stories, but the second story, there's like seventy square feet of living area. So it's an A-frame, if that's, um, many of you, I'm sure have been out to see it now. The proposed um structure is going to be thirty-two feet, uh, mean height, which complies with the ordinance. Uh, the lot coverage is currently eleven percent and it goes to sixteen, which is still well below the twenty percent requirement. And the open space is currently at eighty-nine and there's reduced to eighty-four percent. So there's a slight reduction in the open space requirement. The front setback is currently at nineteen five. That improves to twenty-three point one. Side setback A is at twenty-two and it continues to meet it at twenty point one. Side setback B is currently at two point three and is improved to ten point four. So that meets the minimum requirement for side setback for new structures. In the ordinance. And the rear setback is forty-two point nine and it's actually increased to forty-three point two, given the shape of the structure. The F A R is currently at twenty-one and the proposal is to have it to go to point three two. If you could go to the next slide, please. So here's a photograph of the structure. As you can see, it's built in, it literally built into the dune and you can see the rear um reduction there. Um, and it's an A-frame, so you can also see how there's um only a small amount of living space on the second floor. If you can go to the next slide, please, Andy. And here's a view from the intersection of sixty-fifth and Northern, looking down the street and then a little bit further away. And then looking directly down the street from Northern down to sixty fifth. You go to the next slide, please, Andy. And these are the elevations of the existing conditions. So we have the east elevation. You go to the next slide, please, Andy. And the um, south elevation. Next slide, please. And existing west elevation. And the existing north elevation. And then if you go to the next slide. So this is also um the uh site plan. I think what's important to see about the site plan is you can see how it improves the setbacks um on that side B. And is located more towards uh the middle of the lot rather than uh towards the uh, the edge on that side B. So, um, as you are aware, um, we, if you go to the next slide, please, Andy. The project is to demolish the single-family home, um, elevate it above the floodplain, increase the F A R from twenty-one to thirty-two. Uh, eliminate the front yard setback nonconformity, reduce the side B setback nonconformity. Maintain over eighty percent open state, space, uh, and maintain the requirements with the other dimensional requirements. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of condition for this project, finding the project meant the performance standards for the Plum Island. Um, resource areas and could go forward. Um, as you know, we were not involved in the beginning of this project. And so in order to be, understand more fully. What the board was requesting when they were requesting a comparison of the F A R, which by the way is entirely appropriate. Uh, we reviewed the minutes of the board meetings from July fourteenth and August eleventh. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. Um, and so before I go into that, here's the proposed structure. We have the proposed uh, uh, first floor or the. I guess the ground level in the next slide, please. So here's the first floor. That's the elevated first level. And the next slide, please. Uh, and then the next slide, this continues to be a three-bedroom home, which it is today. And the next slide, please, Andy. And then you see how um this is elevated again. Uh, to address Mr. Delisle, you had an earlier question, an earlier application relative to the rot raising of that uh first floor member. What they call the first floor living area member, which has to be raised above the floodplain, uh, or flood elevation. And that's why this house is being raised. Uh, it meets the performance standard and is certainly better for flood resiliency. Um, and is required when you do substantial renovation, which is a renovation that's equal to fifty percent or more of the value of the structure itself. Um, and then uh, the next slide, please, Andy. So here's the other elevation at left side and the next slide, Andy. And here we have the rear elevation. And the next slide, please, Andy. And the right side elevation. And you have the next slide, please. So, the ordinance requires a comparison to the neighborhood. And I know that there's in some discussion in the staff notes relative to whether or not the board should compare the F A Rs. And so it's difficult to compare F A Rs for sure, um, for all of the reasons we've now experienced. Um, but the board certainly has to compare the structure to the neighborhood because that's the standard, right? Whether or not this is going to be substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming structure or use to the neighborhood or the Piad. You can't do that in a vacuum for sure. So if you go to the next slide, Andy. So, the purpose of the Piad is, we look at this, is to reduce damage to the public and private property resulting in floodwaters. Ensure public safety by reducing threats to life and personal property, eliminate costs associated with responsive cleanup and flooding. Avoid the loss of utility services damaged by flooding. That's why we lift the utilities. Prevent occurrence of public emergencies resulting for water quality contamination or pollut- pollution due to flooding. And eliminating new hazards to emergency response officials. You go to the next slide, please. In this particular instance, we are keeping this a single-family home. And we're constructing a new single-family home with the same number of bedrooms elevated on pilings. Um, we are elevating the home above the floodplain. If you could um go to the next slide, please, Andy. So the standard of the ordinance is, um, the alteration, reconstruction, or extension or change. The floor area ratio may be allowed upon the grant of a special permit by the Board of Appeals and shall not require a variance. I think that's very important to remember and I talked about this the last time we were before the board. Um, in the rest of the city, if you're going to exceed the, if you don't currently meet and are going to exceed. Excuse me, if you currently meet and are then going to exceed a dimensional requirement, it requires you to get a variance. But on Plum Island, if you don't, if you currently meet a particular dimensional requirement, in this instance, the floor area ratio. You're not required to get a variance. It's a lesser standard. It's a special permit standard. So the standard is whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and to the Piad. I think that's an, it's a significant difference. And I believe that the reason is, is that the, is the island, the lots are so small. And because the home, most of the homes don't meet the flood requirements, um, and the flood resiliency requirements. There's some latitude that's given to this board to approve improvements that may exceed the F A R. But may be better for the island and or for the neighborhood. And then in addition, the um, the uh, the standard is also. Whether or not the modifications are substantially more detrimental to the existing structure, um, or to the neighborhood or the Piad. From the existing structure or to the neighborhoods of the Piad. Um, so if you go to the next slide, please, Andy. So this board wanted to know as it um was beginning its um deliberations in July and August. How is it that this compares? We can see how it compares, but how does it really compare from a, a volume point of view? Really, because that's what we're looking at when we look at F A Rs, is volume under the roof. And on July fourteenth, the minutes reflect that Mr. Delire would, Mr. Delile would also like to receive data on other structures in the neighborhood. Perfectly reasonable. August eleventh, um, Ms. Webb said she would like more information on the abutting properties. While the applicant has demonstrated that there are parcels with greater densities, they are not immediately adjacent to the property in question. Mr. Delisle said while the proposed structures would be an improvement over the existing one. He would like the additional information on the F A R of the immediately abutting properties. All of those reasonable questions. I didn't represent the applicants at the August eleventh meeting, but I heard that presentation. And there was a presentation by the architect and his team, uh, relative to properties around there. But certainly not the ones that were immediately adjacent. So the architect went to work. Um, so Andy, if you go to the next slide, please. So as you're aware, at that August meeting, when the architect made his presentation, what was discovered was that actually. He was using the living area, um, when comparing it to this property as opposed to the F A R. So when we were um engaged, we had that conversation. And Mr. McTray came up with this plan, which you saw at the September eighth meeting. He used at that time, as he exclaimed several times in the meeting, the gross floor area as shown on the assessor's cards. Without consideration, well, he exclaimed that at the meeting that he used the gross floor area. But what we didn't know at the time was that it was without consideration of the appropriate deductions to meet the F A R definition, the Piad. But is what's important here is this is what the board based its decision on. So let's look at it. Four of these properties have F A R less than or equal to twenty-five percent. So those are the yellow ones. Six have an F A R between point two six and point three two. Those are the blue ones. And thirteen in this have an F A R in excess of three two. Those are the red ones. So there were nineteen properties that exceeded the point two five F A R. And then the board closed its hearing and based uh, and then based its decision hopefully on more than just these calculations. Because certainly there are more considerations to be taken other than F A R, not the least of which is flood resiliency construction. On October twenty-second, the board uh voted to reopen this public hearing. On October twenty-seventh, the new report zoning administrator issued a memorandum on the Plum Island floor area ratio calculations. To be very clear with everyone, exactly what she considers to be the meaning of the definition of F A R. Andy, if you could go to the next slide, please. This slide now represents the F A R calculations pursuant to. The zoning administrators memorandum and a number of other things, because let's be clear. We cannot go into every single property that's not the property of the applicant. These represent the most accurate calculations possible on the immediately adjacent properties, taking into account. It's not possible to enter those properties. And the result, um, so the result shows a different distribution. But remains relatively consistent despite the second applicant, the second calculation, albeit not heavily. As weighted to the over the point three twos. Here, Mr. McTray used the applicable ordinance definitions and the October twenty-seventh memorandum of the zoning administrator interpreting F A R. He used data from the assessor's cards and data from field visits undertaken by myself personally, along with my colleague. Um, Libby Balker to verify to the extent that we could what was on the ground, so to speak. And that is what we base this presentation on. We note it is not a perfect calculation. The zoning administrator's interpretation prevents, it, it's not her fault, but it's impossible unless you actually go in and take. Um, measurements inside each of these houses to have a perfect, exact calculation. That being said, this board did not request a perfect calculation, nor does the require, the ordinance require that when making comparisons. The board wanted more information on the surrounding properties. The key word of the standard at play here is substantially. Substantially does not require exactness. It requires information sufficient to determine whether the proposed alteration. Is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the Piad. That is, to a great or significant extent, more detrimental. The data provided is as accurate as it can possibly be. It applies the most recent official guidance on the F A R calculations. It uses conservative measures when using assessor card data for certain spaces. For example, in the finished half-story, the living area from the assessor's card was used as opposed to the gross floor area. Because living area includes a head height of six feet, which is what the zoning code administrator's office uses. An exterior visual inspection on all properties was done to discern whether the basements on the assessor's cars were actually crawl spaces. Or whether our addicts had the requisite head height to the extent that could be determined from a visual inspection or reasonable interpretation from the street. So for example, when we went by and we saw that there was a bulkhead going into a basement, we thought that that was not usable area. As opposed to a slider that walked into a basement, which clearly had head height of six feet. Um, the visual inspection also allowed us to include sheds, not largely not list on the assessor's card in the F A R calculation. As prescribed by the zoning code enforcement officers memorandum. This data is supported by the assessor's cards, which we provided to you and noting the source of numbers used, the verifiable calculations. In response to the board's request for more information. So what do we have? The second iteration of calculations did not materially change the outcome. The above data shows that the distribution of F A R densities for the properties remain split with a higher number above point two five. So this time, we had nine properties with a F A R equal to or less than point two five. Those are the yellow ones on here. We had six with an F A R between two, point two six and point three two. Those are the blue ones. And there were eight that had an F A R exceeding point three two. Those are the red ones. So with fourteen properties, more than half of the properties exceeded an F A R of point two five. So most of the properties still exceed the point two five F A R in the neighborhood. This is but one aspect of how the board determined the outcome previously. Nothing has changed about the specific criteria in the ordinance. Andy, if you go to the next slide. Now, uh, this you can hardly read, but it is a compilation of what you have in your packages. And it is the compilation, if we need to, we can go through this um individually, but it's what's shown on the plans as well. So Andy, if you could go to the next slide. So as I just said, I can reiterate, eight have the F A Rs that exceed point three two, six have F A Rs between point two five and point three two. A total of fourteen have of the twenty-three have F A Rs that exceed the Piad standard. And, and if you go to the next slide. So, the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming structure or use. It's still a single-family use that's maintained. F A R is consistent with the surrounding homes. It eliminates the setback nonconformity and reduces the side, the front setback nonconformity and reduces the side B nonconformity. It maintains double the required open space. It elevates the home to a preferred standard for a flood zone. Where flood resiliency is the main purpose of the Piad. The home is more conforming from a demure. The home is more conforming from a dimensional point of view, once the renovation, once it will be renovated as proposed. It's better for the environment and clearly and more in line with the purpose of the pie out once renovated. Conservation commission has approved the changes in conformance with the performance standards. I remind the board again, this is a special permit standard, not a variance. The city council contemplated in the adoption of the pile that there would be instances where homeowners would need or want to exceed the FAR. Should they, um, and should be permitted to do so upon the shop proper showing that would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pie out. Despite the ongoing efforts and pleas of the planning staff that this board does not make policy. The city council makes policy. The board needs to apply the ordinance with the facts at hand. It's not appropriate to speculate about future unknown circumstances relative to growth and development in the pie out. In the case of Fitzsimmons versus the Board of Appeals of Chatham. The plaintiff sought a special permit to construct in addition to convert a summer cottage into more of a house. The appeals court said that the zoning board denial. The zoning board denied based on detriment to the neighborhood. As it would be difficult in the future to refuse the plaintiff's permission for year round occupancy. Those were the facts. However. The appeals court disagreed and stated, we think the board aired when it took into account. As bearing upon present decision. A putative problem to be faced in the indefinite future upon now uncertain facts. The board has to deal with what's in front of them and has to apply the ordinance. As the city council has adopted it to date, not what the planning office wishes it would be. The board approved these improvements before. Well, some of the information has changed. It has not changed dramatically. And no other factors upon which your decision was based is different. Mr. McShera pointed out that he should have been clear about what the, um, basis was for the FAR calculation. Um, or the comparison, I should say, for the gross square foot, gross square footage versus the surrounding homes. For that. We have now presented the information to the best of our ability. To, um, answer any. Questions about inconsistencies which may have been presented. We request the board affirm your prior decision. As you can still find that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pie out than the existing structure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. At this point, um, we're going to. Solicit any, um. Opinions of any of the public that's listening to that or just heard that presentation. So. Let's see, we still have a good list of participants. Again, we're not looking for those. That are in favor or, you know, any order, just anyone that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. You will be recognized and, uh, and asked to contribute. I see Tara Cammett. Or Kamat?
Yeah, this is Ron Boyzard at ten sixty eighth street. Um, I just want to address a couple of things. I'm going to try to be as quick as I can. To elaborate on Attorney Mead's statement of purpose, uh, under section twenty one A. Uh, there's one piece I didn't see that was listed on there, which was to limit the expansion of non-conformant, single and two family structures so as to prevent the exacerbation. Of existing problems with density and intensity of use. So, you know, I think that should be factored in there as well. Regarding the fourteen, um, properties that exceed the point two five FAR. Of those at most, there are three. That were done, uh, after the establishment of the pie out. Um. So, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at properties that were constructed anywhere from nineteen hundred to nineteen eighty. And where the purpose of this is to prevent that expansion. Of non-conforming structures. Kind of makes me question why we have it if we can look at structures that were built a hundred years ago. And use that as a justification to disregard the standard. Um, as far as being. Not more detrimental, uh, if I did my math correctly. Uh, the point three two FAR is twenty-eight percent over the ordinance. And it's a sixty-six percent increase in the existing FAR. Um, I also failed to see how the rear setback improved unless I misread that on the drawing real quick. Uh, I believe it said it was, it improved to something like forty-three feet. And if I saw it on the, the drawing, it's actually thirty point something. Um, so I think that's also of note. Um. See, uh. And I, I think that's, that's pretty much all I have right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in attendance that wishes to comment?
Mr. Moore, if I could make a correction on something I said, um, before you. I said that, um, it currently has three and it's going to have three. It has two bedrooms currently. It's going to have three bedrooms as permitted under the pie out. I apologize for that incorrect statement.
Thank you for the correction. So I see no further hands raised from the public who wishes to comment. So seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. Hello?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I just had a, a quick question for, uh, Mr. McShera. Is there an attic for four sixty eighth street? I couldn't tell. It looks like it from the drawing to me, but I'm not positive on that.
Uh, there, there is, uh, sorry, Ryan McShera, eighty-four High Street Ipswich Red Barn Architecture. While there is space above the, sorry, you guys getting the feedback?
Yeah.
Little bit.
Trying to turn it down a little bit. There is space above the ceiling joists on the second floor, uh, but won't be, uh, greater in six feet of height.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So now we will, we will close off, uh, the public comment section. And, um, and we'll turn to, uh, questions from the board. And given all the work that was done on this, uh, I'm going to go from. A little different standing in, in the order that we, we asked for questions and I'm going to go. Out of order and we'll go with, um. The Swanton first, since he put all the work in on this and see if he has any. They probably should review what he, what he mentioned in his meeting with us, especially with us, and then I'll let him, uh, run with the first questions.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you, uh. I, uh, and Andy, could you put up slide thirteen, please?
Uh, sure. Is that, uh, the applicants, you mean?
Yes.
Sure. Uh, sorry, what number was that again?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
Yes, thank you. Um, at our last hearing, uh, when we reviewed this back in September. We were showed a comparison chart, uh, on the FARs. Uh, that compared this house in the drawing here, which had the point three two FARs, we've heard again tonight. To the FAR of its neighbors, uh, and we just saw that comparison chart again. And it was very compelling that night. Most of us stated that was a key reason for us approving it and we unanimously approved it. I think it's important to stress that the only reason we are back here tonight. Is that we found out later. That that pivotal comparison turned out to be apples and oranges. And for example, this slide. Clearly shows that the proposed house has a good sized deck. Which was of course not included in the point three two FAR. But somehow decks were included in all of the neighborhood FARs that we saw that night. So before we get into the new information that we're looking at tonight, I just want to ask a simple question and give the applicant a chance. To talk about what happened here. You know, why did you show us a FAR comparison that included decks on all the neighbors' houses except this one?
Ryan McShera here, eighty-four High Street Ipswich Red Barn Architecture. Mr. Swanton, I, I think your, uh, critique is, is accurate and, and carries a lot of truth. Um, and I want to sincerely apologize to the board, uh, for whatever misunderstanding or inconsistencies I may have previously presented. Um, it certainly wasn't our intent to, uh, doctor the information or make a presentation to you to get, uh. You on our side, uh, that carried incorrect information, uh, but, but some of the inconsistencies that you pointed out are true. We went through the assessors information, uh, and, and used the gross floor area, uh, as, as a tabulation. From the bottom of their card, uh, and applied it to the area of the lot. Um, and, and didn't carefully review for deductions for decks and, and things of those nature. So I think, I think your critique there is, is absolutely true and correct. And, and, and I do sincerely apologize to the board for. For presenting, uh, the, the data in a different way last time that, that certainly would, would appear to present apples to oranges.
Uh, I appreciate your, uh, your, your comments on that. I really do. And I'm not going to belabor this meeting. It's getting late, but you know, I, we talked in our last meeting that. If you look at the minutes, four of us, four of the five people who voted mentioned that data was critical. Uh, and very important, uh, and we were delighted to see it that night, actually. So, um. It was sad to find that it was in apples and oranges, but I appreciate your sincere, uh, comments there about how it came about. I, I guess my second question is. You know, we've learned a lot about FAR data as a result of this project. Uh, you know, one of the biggest things we've learned is that you really can't calculate FARs for neighbors. From assessor data because it doesn't tell you where the headroom is, you know, you have to know if there's six feet of headroom. I think. You know, Attorney Mead, you just chatted about that, about how, you know, you can't let you go in the houses. You really can't tell. Uh, you know, quite frankly, you know, based on what we've learned, I, I'm sorry that we ever encouraged you. To try to calculate this FAR data for the neighbors, um. But I, I guess my problem tonight is here we are again, uh, you are again showing us. Uh, yet another set of neighborhood FAR data. For which you don't know the headroom. So you've had to guess. I appreciate you went down there. You tried to look and see, well, what, what basements do you think we can get in and what? You know, and the planning department has already warned us and said it can't verify any of this data. Um. The presentation we just saw was twenty-eight pages long. The neighborhood FAR data on it, the new stuff was only four pages of it. I guess my question is rather than spend any more time. Trying to make sense of questionable neighborhood FAR data. That can't be verified, that's based on a lot of guesses. Wouldn't it be better? To take a step back here. And decide whether this project should go ahead based on. The information in your other twenty-four pages of your presentation and, and not. Kind of polluted with trying to grapple with this. I know we asked for it. But now that we know what it was. And how you had to calculate it and how you couldn't get it easily. It just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to focus on it. So why are we belaboring it? Why not just focus on? The pros and cons of the rest of the application? That's my question. Mr. Swanton, I, I couldn't agree with you more, except for that, you know, th- there are two things. One, um, I, you know, the board asked for it. So to the extent it could be provided, we attempted to do that. I think that it was important also. To go through the exercise to the extent that it could be, and it's not completely accurate for all of the reasons you said, and I said. That it's not that far off that these houses are about, you know, this is not a, this is not a huge house. It's going to be fourteen hundred square feet. Let me just see. Yeah, fourteen hundred ninety-four square feet. It is, it's not a giant house and there are houses right around it that are much larger than this house. Importantly, to your point, it is going to be, uh, flood resilient. It's improving the non-conformities to Mr., uh, I don't think his name, Mr. Boysever's earlier comment. Relative to that last condition, uh, or last kind of purpose in the, uh, pie out, that it is. Uh, more conforming and not non-conforming, uh, than the existing structure. Um, we're not adding a new residence, which is really what that, um, provision talks about is they don't want to add new single and two family residences. They want to improve if they're going to do anything, the residences that are there to have them be, be more flood resilient, because as you know. Under forty A, section six and under the zoning ordinance. Individuals own single and two family homes are allowed to improve their property, even if they're non-conforming. They're not permit, they're not prevented from doing that and they need a special permit, obviously, in some instances to do that. So. The idea is to have somebody improve their property if they have a single or two family home within certain confines for sure. In this instance, this new, these new, this new house. Actually does that. It's a much better situation than the current structure, which is actually built into a dune. Um, and this takes it up out of the dune. Um, and makes it more flood resilient. So, uh, you know, I would love to just not consider the FAR because it's not possible to get it accurate for other houses. We. Yeah, I think you answered my question. I mean, that basically was my question. Why, why are we belaboring something that we? Right. Was extremely difficult to, to really judge, uh, and, and you can't verify it. So I'm glad to hear you agree that does. We should really be looking at the rest of this stuff. Yeah. And I do appreciate the earlier comment that, you know, that apples and oranges thing that we based our decision on. Was, uh, unfortunate and I do appreciate the sincere apology from people who did it. I guess my next question would be, I mean. We made a decision based on data that we now all agree was wrong and unfortunate. In my opinion, that's a bit of a tainted decision. And, you know, I, I. Doesn't seem right to me to move forward, um, with this project with that. With, based on a tainted decision. So to me, I guess my question is, I don't know if this is a question for the legal team here, but. To avoid that. If we rescind the previous decision and then have a, a new discussion and a new vote on, you know, without that as being the, the. The pivotal factor, not looking at that neighborhood FAR data that we now realize was probably not the right thing to do. You know, is that the right way to unravel this? So we're not having a decision based on tainted data. Andy, you can address this. Sorry, a question for our legal counsel, not, not for the applicant, I think. Is the app, is, is counsel here?
Yeah, so Attorney Eichmann, are you there?
Oh, great.
Yes, I am.
Hi, John.
Looks like I'm still muted.
So.
We can hear you.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, John Eichmann, uh, from the city solicitor's office. Um, I think we discussed this just briefly at the last public, um. Hearing on this application where the public hearing was closed and then a vote was taken to reopen. Public hearing, but, uh. It was, uh, at that point determined that at this public hearing, if the board decided. That, uh, they wanted to revisit the vote they had taken, that a motion to reconsider. Be the appropriate motion to make. If that motion was successful, then another vote could be taken on the application.
And I guess my question, uh, it, I, I appreciate that is the two-step process. But since our vote on, uh, back in September was based on data that we're now, you know, people are apologizing for. If we rescind that vote. And then if we took a new vote that, um, without considering the neighborhood FAR data, I don't know if it would pass or not, but if it passed. Would it therefore no longer? Uh, would it be a stronger decision because it wasn't based on data that we all now realize, you know, was apples and oranges? That's my legal question.
Yeah, to, to the board, to that question. Um, your decision, if you vote to reconsider this and then take another vote on the application. Um, your decision is going to be based on the evidence before you. It won't be tainted, in my opinion. Based on your prior vote. It will be based on what you have now before you and what you decide would be a basis for your decision. So I don't, I don't believe that your prior decision would be an impediment to you taking a new vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, really at this time, I, even though I put a lot of work into this previously, I. Those are my two big, you know, my big questions have been asked. I may have others, but I'll pass the microphone to someone else.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Eichmann, and thank you, Mr. Swanton. I will just continue and, and I'll just grow the, the list as we normally do. So I'll go with, uh, Mr. Delisle. Do you have any, uh, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I, I guess, you know. I don't want to, I don't want to beat up on, uh, on Mr. McShera and I. I don't really want to go back into the FAR the FAR question, but I but I will. So with regard to the the first FAR study that was presented to us on August eleventh, Mr. McSheriff, there was a different methodology for calculating the FAR at that point in time, correct?
Correct.
And then as between the the August eleventh and the September eighth studies, how did you determine how to revisit or revise the methodology?
We went from using the living area in the assessor's data to the gross floor area.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that, but how did, how did you, how did that occur to you to to do that? Or why did that occur to you?
We reviewed the definitions in the pieod and were attempting to get more accurate data for the board. Are you good? Are you good? Okay, thank you. Do you have additional questions, Mr. Delisle?
Yes, just a second. I was thanking Mr. McSheriff for for his response. Yeah, I guess I guess that I don't really have any any further questions on this. I guess that, I guess my comment at this point, which is not part of my deliberation, but just my comment at the question phase, is that we spent so much time on the FAR and so much energy on FAR that I'm not not sure that we have I don't even know if I want to say this. I'm not sure that we have sufficient evidence before us to make a determination as to whether the structure is substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood. Because we 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 focus so much on the on the pieod, because if I remember correctly, excuse me, we focus so much on the the FAR, excuse me. And if I remember correctly, the the whole FAR, the question and request for the FAR study came up because that was really what I think that the 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 board at the time was looking for a way to see things the applicant's way, and I think that the FAR study was what the board thought would would be helpful to the applicant, and it certainly ended up being quite an odyssey, but I think that we focused so much on that that I'm not sure that that we have sufficient evidence otherwise.
Well, thank you, Mr. Delisle. I think, again, we can, we have fleshed that up in deliberations a little bit, I'm sure. But I can certainly understand your point.
Mr. Moore, can I address that for a second?
Sure.
So, Mr. Delisle, I certainly appreciate that because clearly there was a rabbit hole that everybody went down. But before doing that, you made a comment, well, at least it was in the minutes, that if you could go back, Andy, to the slide that has the comments from the minutes, maybe twenty-three right before this. Yeah, so you say at that time in August, and again, this is before my participation, so we went to the minutes. Mr. Delisle said that while the proposed structures would be an improvement over the existing ones, he wanted information more about the immediately abutting properties. So so what you're saying now is, well, you think that obviously an improvement for the property itself, your your question is what, you know, how do, how do they go? How does it work within the neighborhood? So let's back up, Andy, to the photographs that are at the beginning of this presentation. Just to, maybe this is helpful. So obviously, here is the existing structure, and then if you go to the next photographs, it's a little bit, you can see a little bit. So you can see that in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the the structure issue, and that house right behind it, I believe, is Mr. Boisavert's house and Ms. Camet's house right there. You can see the house beyond theirs is improved. I was just out there. Now I can't remember what's right across the street, but you can see the house behind it is also improved. Probably up on pilings, you see the deck behind the A-frame on to the right of it. Andy, if you could go to the other slides here, let's see what else we can see. If you go to the next on the right-hand side, just fill it, just blow up the where the red circle is. So this is Northern Boulevard, so you can see the house right there, and then you can see the two houses in front of it, both on the left and the right for the neighborhood. You can get a little better picture of the pink house-ish salmon color house to the rear, which is also obviously looks like it's a two-story house. And then, and if you go to the bottom left-hand corner of this slide. So this is looking directly down the street. So the houses on the left behind that pine tree, that evergreen, is kind of a conglomeration of of houses. There's a two-family there, which has got this, that little one story on, and then there's a two-story beyond that. You can see beyond, I believe that's Mr. the taller one there, I believe, is Mr. Boisavert's house. So it's directly behind the A-frame. This is the tallest one actually in this photograph, which I think was probably constructed around two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So I think that you can, you can see the neighborhood. Some of the houses have been reconstructed in accordance with the flood resiliency standards. Others haven't. Certainly, constructing this house to be out of the dune and more flood resilient is better for the neighborhood because it's better for implications of flooding that happen out there. It's better for sand movement. Obviously, that's why the Conservation Commission approved it. It's clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, which is really the standard. To the a greater extent, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And given that it would meet all of the flood construction requirements, it would be more in conformance with the existing with the required setbacks, although not entirely conforming, but more conforming. I think that the the board would have that information. That would be my position, but we're happy to answer more questions.
Thank you, Attorney Mead.
Attorney Mead, so thank you for that. That that is actually very helpful. That reminds me of of the the other evidence that we have when we go and we go and look at things, or we can look at things on Google Maps or or what have you, that you know, that, again, coming up out of this rabbit hole is proving to be a little bit difficult.
You're open.
Anything further, Mr. Delisle?
No, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Ms. Webb, do you have any questions?
Were we in the questions or deliberations section? I'm sorry, it's
We're kind of in questions. Yeah, we're in questions, but they've kind of bled into a deliberation a little bit, but if you want to wait, we'll get into deliberations shortly. Whatever you, whatever you want to do.
I I have no questions. I'll hold my comments for deliberations.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Chagrin?
Mr. Moore, I think Mr. Mr. Champetti indicated that Mr. Banovic was on for this one.
That's right. You're correct. I apologize. Thanks for correcting me there, Mr. Baneroy.
Um, I guess I don't necessarily have a specific question. I guess, being a new member to the board, I guess for areas of Plum Island, I guess we're supposed to set our direction from the Plum Island Overlay District, and we've been talking a lot about the floor area ratio. I guess what's concerning to me is that this is a twenty percent increase above the the FAR and sounds pretty substantial to me. And I do see abutters that are concerned with this as well. I think it is the the ratio itself is a measure of the amount of floor area to the amount of slot size, and so I do see that as still a valid measurement tool. And maybe it needs more refinement or, but it is a tool for us, and it is in the the pieod as a way to assess these things. So I guess not necessarily a question, but something for the T F deliberation. So that's my comments.
Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could, as a matter of point of order, and perhaps your counsel can answer this question. I don't know that Mr. Banovic participated in all of the earlier hearings, nor do I know that he was a member of the board at the earlier hearings. If this board is asking to reconsider a vote concerning a hearing for which he neither participated nor was a member, that may be a problem for you all, and Mr. Channon may want to step back in, but that is an issue between the board and your counsel.
Excellent point, Attorney Mead. I would like to go to Attorney Eichman for an opinion on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a good point made by Attorney Mead. I have, I'm not aware of the record, the public hearing record on this, but it would be correct that to vote on this application, even on a reconsideration, the members would have to be present for all sessions of the public hearing and certainly be a member of the board when the hearing was opened. So it would be worthwhile to look at the record to make that determination.
The information that Attorney Mead mentioned appears correct, and I do agree with Attorney Eichman that it would be appropriate to have the correct members involved. Thank you, Andy. So on that, then, Mr. Chagrin is tagged back in.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
I don't have any questions. I just maybe to help Mr. Delisle refresh his memory from the previous meetings, I think as a board in general, most of us felt as though the application did not create any, you know, new problems, and I and I think the only open issue we had was the FAR data. I think at the time, as we deliberate deliberated, I think most of us felt that we could support the application if the FAR data showed us that it was not, you know, going to be the biggest house in the neighborhood. And I'd just like to make that statement because I think if we all recall that the only issue on the table that was going to sway this one way or the other was the FAR data. That's that's my comment.
Okay, I appreciate that. That kind of bleeds in. I don't have any further questions, so given the the late hour, I just want to get this, move this along from questions into deliberations. And I I think we've kind of we've all kind of bled into that, but who would like to lead off on the deliberation point? Keeping in mind that I think the counselor, our our counsel, Eichman, kind of framed it for us in in reconsidering this and reopening this, that, you know, there there was a motion to reconsider that that might come up or and then a new vote, or we can stand with the information provided. It would not tank any prior decision because we are aware of, we have been presented with new information, so I would agree that maybe it shouldn't have an impact after taking this into consideration if we, as a board, decided given the new information, we're still good. So with that in mind, I just wanted to open up deliberations, and I'll just start top down with my list, which is Mr. Delisle. Do you have any further comments on this? I know.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I don't really have, I don't think I have any other, any further comments on it.
Ms. Webb?
I guess I just wanted to add that I agree, we did go down a rabbit hole with the FAR discussion, but I think it started in response to attempting to answer the question contextually about this proposal in relation to the neighborhood so that we could answer the question of whether or not it was substantial, but they're proposing it substantially more detrimental than existing conditions in the neighborhood. So I think, you know, that was kind of in terms of my recollection, where this all began, and, you know, I I regret that, you know, it it turned out to be apples and oranges, and we spent all this time on it, but it it is a, it is a very good proposal. I can certainly support it as as the record reflects from the prior meetings. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I you know, I was, of course, really dismayed when I found that the data we we used to make this decision back on September eighth turned out to be apples and oranges. And I guess that's all come out now by tonight, and I think it was such pivotal data to our decision that I I don't like the fact that we all made a decision. If you go read the minutes, four of us mentioned the new data. Three of us specifically said the new FAR data was very important to our decision. So that's the record, and and I, and now we find out the data was apples and oranges. I think we need to rescind that decision and make a clean decision. Also, it's not based on that. And, you know, that's kind of my take here, and I I think you know, I I'm sure our attorney could tell us the best way to word that, but it sounds like the first vote would be to rescind the decision that we made on September eighth. So that's what I think we need to do, and I think we should let it stand based on what we've now found to be data that could be viewed as very misleading, and it, perhaps it wasn't intended to be, it was mistake, however we got here. But I think we need to undo that part of it and then move on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagrin?
I guess I'd be okay with sticking with the original decision. I don't, I don't think the the new FAR data that was shown us, shown to us today would would have changed my 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 views. So I I'd be okay with sticking with the original decision if if the rest of the board wanted to go down that road.
Fair enough. From from my standpoint, my recollection of the FAR becoming the rabbit hole we all had to jump into started because when we were shown an original map of comps, there were holes in the neighborhood of the immediate abutters, and that kind of raised some antenna. Hey, why are we looking at? And this was the original iteration of FAR. Why are we not seeing certain homes that are really close to the applicant's home being included? So please go back and fill in the blanks. And that was kind of the, I thought, in my recollection, is the impetus for the for requesting the data. And I would agree with some of my colleagues that I I don't. So the data was refined. It was apples or oranges. We've all go down the rabbit hole. We now have all realized that it's an imperfect measure, but it was a measure that was included to at least provide some teeth into how to protect against overzealous developers on the island. So with, even with the new data that was presented tonight, I I didn't see a huge difference in being able to ascertain, given all the information, the fact that the house is higher because it's on pilings to comply with flood zone. There's another story added on to it, so that full story is just going to, you know, the the FAR is imperfect because it's a, it's a pretty simple equation, and it really punishes the smaller lots, even with modest improvements, you're gonna, you're really gonna impact the FAR. So I am reticent to change the original opinion of this product as well, even in light of these new ratios presented. I didn't think it changed anything in my mind more so than the original, that it just didn't, took it a notch down. And and granted, this is a, you know, it's a bigger, it's a big improvement, and it certainly certainly is a change, but I I can't say that it's more detrimental again, to the neighborhood, even with the new data presented. So I I think with that being said, I guess we need to, and I will defer to, again, to counsel, to to Attorney Eichman, we need now to see if there's someone wants to make a motion to reconsider. Would that be the first step? Or is it a motion to leave the prior decision?
Well, Mr. Chairman, a, a motion to reconsider would certainly be in order as we discussed. But it would not be necessary to make it.
Okay.
You could stand on, on the vote you've already taken, or perhaps more procedurally accurate, given that you now essentially taken new evidence, it may be worthwhile to have a vote to reaffirm the prior vote if you're not going to reconsider.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like the, you know, we have a vote to reaffirm motion or, or a vote to reconsider. If someone makes the, if someone were to make that motion, then that's how we should proceed.
I, I would be happy, this is Mr. Swanton, I would be happy to make a motion to reconsider. I just don't know, would it be something like I moved that we rescind our vote on, of December, of September 8th, on the special permit for nonconformities for 468th Street, file number 2020030? Would that be the correct wording?
I believe the wording would just be to reconsider that.
Oh, not rescind?
I agree. Yeah.
The, the correct would be a motion to reconsider the special permit on that.
Okay, I will certainly go with you and counsel's suggestion there. Yep.
Okay.
So anyway, that's, I'll put that motion out there.
So we have a motion to reconsider made by Mr. Swan.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, a motion to reconsider made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle. And so we go to a vote. Mr. Delisle. Was that yes, I assume?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
No.
And Mr. Moore is a no.
How many votes does it take?
It's four.
Does it?
Well, you use Robert's Rules of Order, do you not?
Yes.
Right. And I do not have my Robert's Rules of Order book with me, unfortunately. You know.
Is it a simple majority? Does that have to be silver? I
I, it, it is in, in town meeting time. It's a simple majority. If anybody has a copy of the rules, I'm sorry, I don't have, I could try to look it up over here.
I think it's just a special premise that a special super majorities.
I thought we needed
Yeah, that's true.
I thought we needed four votes to pass.
Yeah, it's four votes to issue the permit in the first place.
That's correct. Right. But this is simply a motion for reconsideration. This is strictly a procedural.
So procedural is just a simple majority?
Well, it's a procedural question under Robert's rules. This is what you follow. If you're following Robert's rules, that would be where you look for a quantum of vote. Hold on a second. I'm gonna see. And I apologize, I did not. And we'll take a quick look.
Yes, Mr. Delisle.
While Mr. Ikeman is looking at the rule, one of the options that Mr. Ikeman gave us in the beginning of this was that we could reconsider, which would be followed again by a motion to approve the, the application.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing.
Yes.
I thought it was a two, two step process as well.
Mr. Chair, this is Attorney Ikeman again.
Yeah.
My quick search on this indicates that under Robert's rules, a motion to reconsider is a majority.
Majority. That's correct. All right. So we have a majority to reconsider. And now I agree that I, Attorney Ikeman, originally you said that once the, the motion to reconsider was made, then we can have a motion to have a new vote on the application?
Correct. After you, if the motion to reconsider passes, then yes, the floor would be open for a motion to approve the application.
The motion to reconsider has passed, simple majority, three to two.
Correct.
So now we are open to a motion for a new vote on the application.
I'll make the motion. It's Rachel Webb. I'll make the motion to approve the, let's see. Case number 2020 dash zero three zero R, special permit for nonconformities at 468th Street.
I'll second that, Stephen Delisle.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Delisle. And we have a new vote on the application in process now. So we'll go through this. Mr. Delisle?
Wait a sec. Is there going to be any discussion of this new motion?
I thought the, and I will ask, I thought the previous discussion covered this. That's a good question, though.
If procedurally, it certainly, the chair could certainly allow discussion on the motion.
Then, then let's allow some discussion on the, on this motion.
Yeah, I mean, if I could jump in, Ken Swanton, just want to make a comment. About three hours ago, we compliment, we complimented a Plum Island application for coming in at point two five far and how wonderful that was. It's now three hours later and we have before us an application that's at point three two. And looking at the impact on the overall pie odd, if everybody out there builds at point three two, that's a lot of density. And I just think, I know the hour is late, but we need to think about that if we're going to approve an application at that high level afar. That's my only comment.
Does anyone else have any comment?
This is Mr. Delisle. I, I concur that certainly for me on a going forward basis, the far is going to be treated very differently. However, this, this application has been around since August. And I, I have to, I tend to agree with, with Mr. Moore's conclusion earlier that the, we, we approved this on far before there was a mistake and there was bad math, bad reading of the ordinance and a bad inputs given to this board. But, you know, we've, we've looked at this. The applicant has we submitted additional information. We've considered the additional information. And I think we've all learned a lot. So I, I think that it's with regard to this application, but perhaps not on a going forward basis. I, I, I think that, you know, the applicant has has shown, I think that this isn't go, going to be more detrimental to the pie odd and to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. I'm just going to leave it open, given the hours. Anyone else wish to comment?
All right, hearing no one else. Again, and I apologize for the choppiness of this, but this is, at least in my mind, is unusual situation. So I'm just going to make sure procedurally, I want to make sure that I'm progressing through this properly. It already has been a hiccup, hiccup or two, and there'll be some more. So given that discussion has closed, if we all feel ready for a vote, a new vote on this application, someone can make a motion. If, if we don't feel that we're ready, there's always the option to continue this to the next meeting. I don't know if that makes a difference to anyone, but
Mr. Chair, isn't there already a motion on the table?
Yeah, there already was a one motion. I made the motion and Mr. Delisle seconded it, I believe.
I, I think we can vote.
Yeah, I think so too.
That's correct.
Thank you, Attorney Ikeman. All right, with that, let's go to a vote, a, a new vote on this application. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
No.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
And I am, yes. That's for, for the affirmative, the application is passed or is approved.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
You're welcome. With that, I believe we have finished all our business for the night.
That was a good discussion, by the way.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Excellent. We'll do this by voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. See you later. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your patience with me.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
Bye.